Order the Oswego Community Unit School District Board of Education meeting for October 21st, 2024. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Serone.
Here.
Mr. Gatewood.
Present.
Ms. Johnsons.
Present.
Dr. Maria.
Present.
Mr. Pogar. Ms. Simelton.
Present.
Ms. Venmuth.
Present.
Our student board members, Hope Rye and Callie Parnell.
Present.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Board. This is one of those special evenings where we get to honor and celebrate the hard work and impact of our educators and all our staff in our district. And we are thrilled this evening to start our Pride Awards celebrations. And so I'm going to turn it over to Teresa and invite the Board to the center as we hear reflections on some of these incredible staff members and all their hard work in service of our students.
Tonight, the Board of Education acknowledges Pride winners from the following schools: Boulder Hill, Long Beach, Old Post, and Brokaw for the month of October. Pride stands for proudly recognizing individuals demonstrating excellence. The Board of Education began the program nine years ago to recognize, promote, and celebrate the many contributions made by teachers and employees across our district. We thank our generous district partners Chick-fil-A, Culvers, Imagination Print and Design, Huntington Learning Center, ServBank, and The Scoop for helping make this program a success. We'd also like to thank everyone who nominated individuals for consideration. Awardees, after your name is called, we ask you to come forward and be congratulated by our Board and Dr. Calgady, and then wait there for all the individuals from your school to be called up so we can do a group photo. We're going to kick off our celebration tonight with Boulder Hill Elementary School. We're going to invite up Ms. Elizabeth Medina, 4th grade dual-language teacher. Elizabeth's nominator exclaims she constantly and consistently demonstrates her commitment to Boulder Hill, the dual-language program, the community, and her school district. She co-founded the Bobcats Celebrate Diversity Club, which encourages and nurtures the identity of all Bobcats and all students in our 308 community. Next, we celebrate Heidi Pajazek, LRC Director. Heidi is described by her nominator as a "student-focused," honoring the identities of all staff and all students, as she advocates for all and brings joy to the entire Boulder Hill population. Heidi is noted as "one of the best things that ever happened to Boulder Hill staff and the community." She consistently educates and enriches herself and then shares that knowledge with the Boulder Hill community to help it grow and thrive. Next, we invite up Amy Wyland, Teaching Assistant. In her nomination, Amy is described as "one of the most dedicated and versatile teaching assistants and is a prime example of what an excellent educator should be." Amy advocates for students during the school day every day, making sure that students succeed in and outside of the classroom. When a classroom needs a last-minute coverage, Amy's ready to help. In addition to her teacher-assistant duties, she is also Boulder Hill's social media contact, runs Makerspace sessions, creates Lego art for the display case, and so much more. At this time, we're going to invite up our building admins that are here from Boulder Hill to join us. Let's hear it one more time for Boulder Hill! Principal Toya and Assistant Principal Pete. Thanks, guys. Our next school up for spotlight is Long Beach Elementary School. We're going to invite Ally Quill, Instructional Coach, forward. Ally's in her first year at Long Beach as an instructional coach and has already made such a positive impact. She came in and had to tackle a new ELA curriculum, and her nominator says she handled everything in such a professional way that you would have thought she'd been here for years. She shows up, works hard, and is eager to help anywhere she can. She is approachable, inviting, and helpful. Her infectious laugh and great sense of humor make her a pleasure to work with every day. Next up is 5th grade teacher Andrea Delight. Andrea's passion, advocacy for all students, and dedication to teaching makes her an ideal candidate for the Pride Award, noted her nominator. Andrea's students know that any space with her is a safe one, where they feel a sense of belonging and can grow both academically and emotionally. A former student stated, "Mrs. Delight is one of my favorite teachers I've ever had. She always listens to her students and always supports you when you try your hardest so you can excel at anything." She greets everyone with a big smile. Her nomination emphasized how she is there for every single student and staff member at Long Beach who enter the lunchroom every day. She is hardworking, kind, helpful, and always ready to conquer the day. One of the amazing ways she makes all the students feel so special is that she knows each and every one of them by name. Congratulations, the students and staff at Long Beach are happy that you call the beach We're going to invite our administrators from Long Beach forward. And air mark, sorry. Yes. Let's hear it one more time for Principal Phil in Long Beach. Now, we're going to celebrate Old Post Elementary School. We invite forward Instructional Coach Anna Gibson. At the start of the school year, Anna graciously accepted to temporarily teach the 2nd grade SEI position when there was no teacher or sub hired yet, in addition to attending to instructional coaching duties. Her nomination says Anna puts a heart and soul into everything she does. She goes above and beyond to make sure every student feels safe, supported, and welcomed at Old Post. She has a wealth of knowledge and always puts others' needs before her own. Thank you, Anna, for always having a smile on your face and stepping in where needed. Next up, Carrie Jones, 2nd grade teacher. Her nomination states that she is "the best choice in recognizing an individual for Pride recognition." She leads many classrooms effortlessly, even when students present challenges. She is a positive role model, always bringing out the best in others, and lifts everyone up to do their very best. Old Post is lucky to have an individual like Ms. Jones. Next up is Teaching Assistant Jessica Osar. She assists daily with challenging student behaviors in both general education and Stars classrooms at Old Post. She also substitutes as a one-to-one TA, a classroom TA, and a classroom teacher in Stars. She uses simple language and visual supports to assist all students in crisis at Old Post. Her nomination exclaims she is "the member you want on your team, no matter the goal." Congratulations, Old Post, Principal Mike Mitchison, and winners. And our final building celebration this evening, we will move to Brokaw Early Learning Center. Intervention Teacher Jaleen Frun. Jaleen is a positive and supportive intervention teacher at Brokaw. Her nominator says she supports every teacher and student at Brokaw in various ways, whether it be by leading the MTSS team, bringing an element of fun and games through the social committee, volunteering when needed, or greeting and welcoming every student who enters through the doors every day. Her work ethic, genuine empathy for others, and team approach sets a positive tone for all others at Brokaw. Next is our blended teacher, Mary Beth Patrick. Mary Beth is described as "an extremely dedicated and compassionate teacher, always working with her students to help facilitate their learning and fully engage with her kiddos." She is very patient, giving students the time they need to calm themselves or process directions. A parent said, "Mrs. Mary Beth is an outstanding teacher who has already taught my daughter to love school." Teaching Assistant Brandy Reynolds. Described in her nomination as "an unsung hero in the building," Brandy does what is needed to support the students, her teacher, and the staff at Brokaw. She is the first to jump in and lend a hand where needed, and if she sees a need, she'll help. Brandy is humble, never asks for recognition, and always downplays any praise sent her way. But tonight, we congratulate you, Brandy. We invite Principal Groves forward, and we'll do a photo. Let's all join in one final round of applause as we recognize and celebrate everyone tonight. Honorries, we ask that you would proceed out into the hall and gather at the landing there of the staircase so that we could do one group photo. And we want to thank all the families and colleagues who joined us here tonight to help support our winners.
As for exit, I just, again, want to congratulate our families. Just let them go. Quite the crowd. Exciting stuff. Madam President, I just want to take a minute to thank our Communications Department, Cindy and Teresa for really organizing and launching this this year. I know Cindy is exiting, but Teresa, if you would just extend our appreciation to your team for organizing this evening's Pride recognition.
Are they going to shut the door? Okay. We are moving on to 5.1, public comment. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters stating staff names or responses to your questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
...district, elementary, high school, outplaced dual-language special education. First, I'm a band parent, so I just want to say to both the Marching Wolves of East and the Panther Marching Band that they did a great job down at ISU this past weekend. So, I'm going to address like three things. First, as I always do, I'm going to encourage our district to investigate approaches to work with our students with brain-based differences, including FASD. As I've mentioned, we probably have about 850 students possibly impacted in a district this big by prenatal alcohol exposures, but brain-based differences for all neurodiversities, including trauma, including ADHD, including autism spectrum. And someone did actually reach out to me from Climate and Culture, and I need to get back to them, so thank you for that. I just wanted to talk about mental health a little bit, kind of having gotten into the high school rhythms a little bit now, because we talk a lot about concern for our mental health of our students, and everything we do is basically reactive. Like, we need to hire more counselors, partner with community mental health agencies, sometimes we have special assemblies. And I've had such great experiences with our counselors. They have a lot of programs on so many different tiers, levels of intervention with our kids, but you really start to see the root causes when you have kids going through the high schools. And we have student ambassadors who might be able to speak to it a little bit. And by that, I mean sleep. And we all know it. You know, if you're weightlifting, you're at school at 5:30 in the morning, or if you've got a club before school, or you're just going in to get extra help, then you've got something after school. Some of our students have jobs. Some of them have to take care of their family members after school in addition to carrying their caseload. They're just not getting enough sleep, and that can go so far towards alleviating depression and anxiety. There's also a constant barrage of information. I have my Google Classroom notifications turned on, and all hours of the day and night, Google Classroom notifications. Your coaches are posting, your instructors are posting, people that lead your activities are posting, there's the Remind Apps going off, there's the texts, there's the Gmails. It's constant, and we can muse about whether or not they should have their cellphones at school, but it's scan the QR code if you're going to fill out this Google form for this club, scan the QR code to make an appointment with your counselor, get out your phone and pull up your Power School app. We want them to be in constant contact. So, that constant barrage of information and that, like, that constant pace, and I know it's the system, it's the society, and everyone does it this way and goes at this pace, but I feel like we need to be really honest about that when we're talking about the mental health of our students, because we're definitely looking to support them, but we're not really able to address these root causes. Power School alone gives you anxiety, because if you have an assignment and it's only worth three points and you get one wrong, that's a D automatically, and a big old D shows up, and you might have students with anxiety responding to that in a negative way. And then I also wanted to address dual-language. And I don't know if you're aware of this, and so I mean this completely respectfully, because initially I was quite furious, and now I just feel disappointed. Last year, a Dual Language Improvement Committee came into being because parents refused to let the DL program at Plank go down in flames, basically. Not just parents, but staff gave much time, energy, and dedication to meetings several times. We had a list of concerns and needs signed by over 100 dual-language families, and we didn't make it through that list. Now, I hear rightful presence used a lot in these board meetings, and it doesn't feel like that applies to dual-language families, because no one is, we're nine weeks into the school year, and no one has reached out about continuing this committee. Why? I know that we have new directors in place in this program, but someone needed to communicate this to them. They should have been asked when they were hired, "How do you plan to continue the work at this dual-language committee?" Because I can tell you I'm not the only one, but people are mad, people are hurt by this. And so, I didn't know if you're aware of that, and I wanted to make you guys aware of that. I'm going to try to go to the BPAC meeting tomorrow night and meet the new directors, but I also wish that they would reach out directly to the families to introduce themselves. I saw the letter they sent staff. They have good experience. I think our families would like to know, here's who's in charge of our program now, especially after the tumult that occurred last year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it? All right, I'd like to move on to 6.1 and ask Dr. Calgady to provide us with his superintendent
Well, I'm on a high from that celebration from our staff, recognizing so many of the faces of educators and staff coming up here. It was just really thrilling to see the recognition, and it's important, we know education is repeatedly under fire from our communities at large, and it's good to know that in our community, we take time to appreciate and be grateful for our front, really our front and the core of our practice, because outside of our schools and the spaces and places where those individuals are working, is there any more, any place more important? Sure is more important than us here, it's important than our district work, it's the most important place, and we want to thank again those educators and our staff for prioritizing that. You know, really, we're looking forward again to the next coming months, the next couple of months, to really bringing in other folks to really speak to that and to nominate folks to that, and so I just would encourage the community to speak and to submit those recommendations and those celebrations. And at the, in our schools, we have individuals who we often think of as the selfless giants of our school buildings, which is our principals. And our principals this month, we are celebrating our principals for their leadership. They carry a unique responsibility in terms of balancing leadership, prioritizing their school improvement plans for student success, staff development, community engagement, and the list, tying shoelaces, I'm sure that was a priority for those of us who've served as elementary principals, making sure we took time to see even in the small things. Their efforts have really been instrumental in ensuring that our schools are safe, welcoming, and thriving environments, and I want to thank and extend an appreciation to each one of our principals for their dedication, perseverance, and leadership. You embody the core values and hold that of our district, and we thank you for really holding our staff and our students so dear to the work, and especially our community members as we work together. Our schools are better because of you, truly. And I see our ambassadors are shaking their hands, so really echoed. Yes, that's a great moment to pause. I could go on and on and up, but I'm going to pause, because I'm, so, our principals are so important. In a couple of weeks, we want to invite our parents. We've this year launched, over the summer, our Parent University. This is a unique opportunity. We have a, we are developing the kinds of structures for our parent engagement. We have successfully launched, again this year, our BPAC, which was really having a hard time last year, and we've really successfully launched it this year. There've been a number of events. Another opportunity for our families is the Parent University, and this will be this coming Saturday at the Junior High. If you are, well, sorry? It got moved? Oh, it's at Boulder Hill, okay. So, got to move, got moved to Boulder Hill. All right. So, not at Plank, at Boulder Hill. This is an opportunity to engage in conversations with other families around trauma development, thinking about how trauma shows up in our experiences in our lives, and how that impacts our parenting or in schools. It's an opportunity to engage in reflections about healthy homes and school life, safety and technology usage. Many, our area businesses will be there to offer many resources, and so I would say that if you are interested in learning about these partnerships that we're developing, please come out. We also have a raffle and a bag of goodies to win through local businesses, including laptops. What? Okay. Board members, you cannot, I'm kidding. You can attend, of course. Child care is provided, and also breakfast and lunch will be available at no cost. To learn more, I invite you to our website, where you can learn more about these opportunities and the way in which we are partnering, and I want to thank our Department for Equity Engagement for their organization of planning of this event. It's truly, really a wellspring of initiative that's really moving towards being parent-led, and we want to thank our families for their support. On the student achievement side of things, I want to congratulate both of our high schools for being named to the AP Honor Roll. The number of AP, yes, another round of applause. Let's do it. The number of AP courses offered, the number of teachers teaching AP courses, the number of students enrolled, the number of students who score well on AP tests, and the number of tests AP students take all weigh into this Honor Roll placement. Not an easy placement. We are very proud of our high schools and the effort of our educators to really champion this, and our leaders in thinking about how we strengthen this process and to grow their learning. Congratulations to OE for their Silver Distinction and OH for their Bronze with Access Distinction. So, again, thank you to those. And also, one of the wonderful practices that the Board has really promoted over the last couple of years is a public forum. So, Monday, November 7th, November 4th at 7:00 PM, we want to remind the community that we will have our public forum, and all families and community members are invited. The forum will be held at Plank, this will be held at Plank Junior High, and we invite staff, students, parents, and community members to join the Board, an opportunity to learn and engage together. And the Board does have meetings twice a month, so you're always welcome to come make public comment to the Board, but also, this is a unique opportunity to go a little deeper into certain themes and topics. to go a little deeper into certain themes and topics. And now I want to invite board members to join me as our tradition, additional comments, because there are just so many good things happening around the district.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to start on behalf of the board, echo some of Dr. Kelgotti's comments about our principals. We want to celebrate and thank the principals who lead our schools with dedication and care. This weekend, every week throughout the year, we appreciate all they do to inspire students, support staff, and to create a culture of learning and joy. So happy Principals Appreciation Week to our incredible school leaders. We really appreciate you.
It's National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through the 25th. The Transportation Department and many others in the district work very hard every day to ensure the safety of our students on and off the bus. As a reminder, when you're on the road, please be observant and follow the rules about stopping for buses. It's all of our responsibility to help keep our kids safe. Thank you to our hardworking staff. Keep up the great work.
Our district's food drive is in the final stretch. We need to break last year's totals and invite the community to join in this excellent giving opportunity. Please visit our district website for a link to the online donation page. We look forward to announcing our winners at Friday night's 20th Anniversary Crosstown Football Game. Again, this makes a huge difference.
Can I expand on this and correct me if I'm wrong? But I believe for every dollar that we donate, it's eight items. So not only can you, you know, represent the school, but you can do a lot with a dollar. So if you don't have cans of food in your pantry, give a buck, give five bucks, 10 bucks, makes a big difference.
Thank you. Congratulations to Oswego East alum Ray J. Dennis. The Washington Wizards announced Saturday that they are signing the guard to a two-way contract coming from the Los Angeles Clippers, where he was on their training camp roster. The MAC Player of the Year, and 20, he was MAC Player of the Year in 2023. His career continues to gain success. Congratulations, Ray J. We all love you and are watching you play and can't wait to see that all you accomplish. Your Oswego community supports you.
Oh, wait, there's more. Congrats to OHS freshman Ellie Wirtel on her fourth-place finish at the IHSA State Girls Golf Finals at Hickory Point Golf Course in Decatur on Saturday. We look forward to officially recognizing your accomplishment at an upcoming meeting. And on another, speaking of sports, I wanted to congratulate the OH football team for clinching first in their division with a 42, 42 to 10, was it, I think, win on Friday? So they are incidentally ranked number 10 in Illinois.
Before you get started, Dominique, Kendall Grant ultimately made it down in golf to our, to the state tournament. So I just want to recognize her as well.
Kendall Grant, very good.
One of our valued district partners, Chick-fil-A in Oswego, is hosting a Spirit Week competition today through Friday. Each time you visit the restaurant, you can mention either OHS or OEHS. The school with the most mentions will be announced on Friday night at the Crosstown game. The winning school will receive $1,000 and the other will receive $500. You're going to be there anyhow.
Last Friday, the ASCEND event was held at Aurora University. This incredible event included over 300 students from 11 area school districts. The learning, sharing, energy, and hope that sprung from the gathering helped equip and empower students as they travel their educational journey. Special thanks to Dr. Waller for her leadership in helping to organize this fantastic event. Thank you, Dr. Waller.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Kelgotti. 6.2, Student Board Member Reports. I don't believe we have any, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, wrong. Nope, nope, Student Board Member Reports. I was thinking about something else, okay. I know, go, go right ahead.
This is our brief summary on the ASCEND program. I would first like to thank Dr. Kelgotti and board members Ms. Wedmuth, Ms. Johnson, and Ms., Mr. Pogar for attending. Thank you, Ms. Shannon Gill from Aurora University for hosting, and Dr. Evans from Wabonzi Community College for creating the event alongside our very own Dr. Waller. Thank you to the student and district coalition students and sponsors for their leadership and participation in the event. Thank you to Ms. Simmons, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Gelson, Ms. Rocky, Rocky B., Ms. Pryor, Ms. Palumbo, and several other scholars from AU, Wabonzi Valley View, and IMSA for presenting sessions. And thank you to the 300 students from 16 high schools and 11 school districts. And there were at least 75 adults who had a hand in making this event a success. So now I'll talk a little bit about the ASCEND program. ASCEND has provided valuable lessons on valuing others for their diverse cultures and backgrounds. It has fostered an environment where individuals are encouraged to stand up for their rights while promoting rightful place and respect. Through a variety of activities, workshops, and discussions, ASCEND has highlighted the significance of embracing diversity and understanding different perspectives. This program has shown that when we appreciate the unique qualities that each person brings to the table, we create a more harmonious and productive community. By teaching the principles of respect, rightful place, and cultural appreciation, ASCEND has played a crucial role in helping individuals develop a broader, more empathetic, empathetic view on the world. These lessons are essential in creating environments where everyone feels valued, heard, and respected, ultimately leading to a more stronger and more cohesive communities.
With this, we aim to ensure that students can access more trusted adults within the district. The ASCEND serves as an excellent opportunity for individuals to cultivate a broader empathetic perspective of the world, leading to the classroom environment. It enables participants to recognize differences and appreciate various viewpoints, which is essential for the understanding, understanding between students and teachers, ultimately leading to a greater sense of trust. Also, for a side note, unfortunately, I was not able to make it. However, I want to thank everyone that we just listed for making it happen because I saw it was a great opportunity and I hope to be part of it next time.
Thank you very much. 6.3, Board Member Comments. Any board member comments?
I have a few.
Yeah, we'll start over here with you, go ahead.
I've just been to a couple of different events in the past couple of weeks, so I just wanted to give a really quick shout out. First of all, I was able to attend the Hispanic Heritage Presentation at Plank. And it was, it was great. Students put in a lot of work. There was lots of really good food, which I smelled but didn't taste. But anyway, take my word for it, it was good. They also, the students also put together little presentations on Hispanic people and history that they admired. So just want to say that my favorite was Roberto Clemente because he's always been one of my favorite baseball players. So anyway, shout out to them, they did a good job. Mrs. Johnson, I'm going to defer to you on the details, but I did spend a happy day distributing, sorting through, distributing, I think it was 3,800 bundt cakes. That was done by Bionic. I'll let you elaborate on that later. That was, that was fun. I also, I'm wearing this today, stopped in at one of the robotics meetings last Tuesday. There were 100 kids there at Robotics HQ, working, amazing, working on apps, working on new robots, working on all sorts of stuff. Fair amount of women were there too, which I thought was very encouraging. So those kids are always great. I wanted to add on ASCEND. The, one of the keynote speakers there was Lauren Underwood. And Ms. Underwood was encouraging everyone that would be of voting age by Election Day to come out and vote. And I would like to encourage everyone to do that, whether, whether you turn the appropriate, whether you turn 18 today or several years ago, like some of us, just go out and vote. I already, I already mentioned OH football. Probably me. And I also wanted to reiterate too, I did get the opportunity to go to a couple, a couple band meets this year for both OH and OE. And another separate groups of students doing a lot of hard work. So thank you, everyone, and I'm done.
What else?
ASCEND was wonderful. Thank you all so much. There was just a lot of joy there that day, and it was nice to see smiles on faces. And I've been to and done a lot around the DEI space. And just when you think you have a grasp on it, you still learn something. So I also just want to give a shout out to Aurora University. It was a beautiful day on campus. They are incredibly gracious to SD 308, and I'm grateful for their partnership. It was a beautiful place to host ASCEND. I also got a chance on Friday, and may have forced my husband, who was leaving for a business trip, to attend with me. You can't take it with you at OHS. I just want to give a huge shout out to them. It was fantastic. I, these, I sometimes forget, I've seen a lot of Broadway that I'm sitting in a high school production, and it's absolutely phenomenal. And also to watch kids that you watched grow up turn into these, you know, incredibly talented young adults. So just shout out to the cast and the crew and the technical team for You Can't Take It With You. Everybody else was at the game. I was like, I need a little theater in my life. I knew the football team would be taking care of it. And I just want to suggest, and I don't, I'm going to step over the line here from board member, but we really need to look at the PA, the system, the sound system in OH. I was in the fifth row, I'm deaf and hard of hearing and could barely hear them. My husband, who is fully hearing, had a hard time hearing. So if we could look into it and get these students so we can amplify their voices for real. But for whatever reason that we're in the OHS auditorium or OE auditorium, it would be great if the sound system could be as optimal as possible. So thank you very much.
No, I was just going to ask if that would be part of the...
Comprehensive maintenance? Building facilities?
The building facilities plan, that could be an addition. If it's not already included, look at that sound system. Because I agree at OH.
Yeah, capital improvements, but also really upgrades to our technology, our, those kinds of things can really be a part of that. If anything, they can be also part of kind of staggering how we dedicate our resources, whether it's a soccer field or a turf field or a PA system, thinking about how we balance our funds, or transportation, improving our transportation. So these are all part of it. And the master facility plan definitely is really important. And I would, and our strategic planning process is also a really important part. So these are both really important plugs, and I want to thank you all for bringing those up.
And I'm so sorry, really quick, Mary Jo did a great job. I just want to congratulate Bionic. They sold 1,000 more bundt cakes than they did last year. And so just so everybody understands, these students sold $25,000 worth of bundt cakes to make $3,500. And so I'm just going to say this, without Mary Jo, we would have not made it because we still have to be ready at 2:26 when those kids line up to pick them up. And with 1,000 cakes more, it was a little stressful, so.
It's a lot of calories going through that room.
And 3,800 bundt cakes, yeah.
I didn't want to see another bundt cake bowl for a while.
All right, thank you for that. 7.1, Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'd like, I would like to make a motion to approve all items under consent, including minutes from the Board of Education meeting on October 7, 2024, open and close sessions, and to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district.
Second.
Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Ms. Wedmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Action item 8.1, District Administrative Contracts. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the district administrative contract as discussed and presented.
Second.
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Wedmuth?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
You have a question?
I do have a question. Do we need to add "as discussed" in closed session to this?
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did.
I apologize.
I checked you.
Aye.
I thought I checked you.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Action item 8.2, Personnel Report. Can I have a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Simulton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Wedmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. I acknowledge Dr. Zwinkie.
Good evening, board. We're excited tonight to welcome two new administrators that you just approved this evening. So I'm going to invite Dr. Dubiel from our Diverse Learners Department to introduce our newest administrator.
Congratulations. Welcome to the, for the recommended candidate or the approved now candidate. For Program Administrator Interim is Mrs. Fleur Pavelka. Mrs. Pavelka has been in special education for over 17 years. She has served as an LBS teacher, teacher leader, and coordinator of special education programming. Her strong background in therapeutic day school and working with all grade levels, combined with her current graduate work to pursue the administrative endorsement, which is to be completed by February 2025, makes her an excellent candidate for the Program Administrator Interim to support Eastview Academy and Oswego High School. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Pavelka.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Dubiel. Dr. Paul, from your department, if you could introduce our newest member of Learning and Innovation.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. The candidate you just approved is our newest STEAM coordinator, Hana Becker. He is currently leading a startup company. Hana began his career as a high school chemistry and physics teacher and instructional coach at Indianapolis Public Schools. Through the interview process, Hana's strengths identified included his considerable STEAM background, his knowledge of effective systems, his considerable background in high-quality instruction, his appreciation for equity and engagement of all students, and his working internationally. His experience in STEAM, our foundational practices, and leadership are needed for this position. Please join me in welcoming Hana Becker.
Welcome.
I'm going to invite Ms. Obafemi regarding updates regarding our financial statements and investment schedule.
So we're sharing...
Pull the mic forward.
Yes, I'm sorry. We are sharing the monthly investment. So a couple of things. I'm going to start out by showing that we share the CPI memo. And the reason why we share CPI memo is because CPI is fundamental to the levy that we, that we do for property taxes. And the multiplier that we use for the levy is based on the CPI. So we track that every month to see where we are. So the last couple of months, this is from the August CPI. It's always a month behind. So the August CPI comes out in September, around the second week in September. So it shows that in August, the CPI is 0.2, same as it was in July. And the next item that I would like to talk about is the financial statement for, for the year, which is the budget. As it stands right now, the expenditures are in line with what we'll expect at this time of the year. And the last thing that I would like to point out is the financial statement. If you've been someone who pays attention to the financial statement over the years, you will notice that we have significantly more document in the investment report. And the reason is, in the past, we only had a page on the app. And what we did is, whatever money we collected, we just kind of left it in the bank, if you will. And what we did is whatever money we collected, we just kind of left it in the bank, if you will. What we're doing now, we're doing more investments. We're looking for a way to leverage the money that we have in hand, instead of it having, instead of just the money sitting in the bank. And I want to caution by saying that, in doing this though, we're still in compliance with Illinois Municipal Investment Policy, which is to invest in conservative instruments that preserve the original capital that we're talking about. So what you will see is we are investing in CDs and also in treasury. These instruments are permissible under the Illinois Municipal Investment Strategy. The upside of it is, is that we know the feds have been lowering interest rate, and that is impacting yield. So we're trying to get in front of it. And what we did, we have a pretty detailed cash flow. So what we've done is we structured the investment to make sure that we're making some yield before we need that cash as a way to help us financially.
Can I just clarify, prior to, so prior to your tenure, what you're saying is, prior to your tenure, we weren't making these investments? We were just having our money basically in a savings account?
Yes, it just, yeah.
Well, it was probably in, something.
Not.
We can be candid here.
Yeah, not as coordinated as it is now, as far as.
One of the things.
Being intentional.
I'm only asking because it's just interesting to me. I see we're at two hundred fifty thousand dollars or below, and that's to keep us at FDIC.
That's exactly.
So we're investing in the banks. I'm assuming these are CDs?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
They are.
And then when we're at the higher dollar amounts, it's because of, we're investing in federal government or Freddie, okay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, it's a, I don't know, that's, that's, are you working with like a particular company that's coordinating that, or?
We work with PMA. PMA is our advisor.
So the yield is a, probably a little lower, but we're staying FDIC.
The yield is actually averaging about four point five percent.
I'm saying, yeah, if we were to go out and get a ten million dollar, not an FDIC one.
No, we would never do.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm, so, but it's worth it, what I'm saying, cause then you're insured.
Yes.
I don't know.
Which is why we structure it. So if anything goes wrong, we're compensated by the FDIC insurance.
You got a laddering?
Yeah, that's exactly what we do.
Think, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Um, next, I wanna invite Ms. Mosley, LaShawn is here this evening, to speak about the, for information, the transportation hazardous route study. Should we do drum roll too for this one, Ms. Mosley?
Good evening.
Very important, and I want to just thank you for you and your team's leadership. I know that as we entered the school year, you were all but six weeks on the job, and we went right into the fire of starting the school year. And so I want to just thank you for your perseverance and your team's efforts throughout this period. I know that it's very challenging. We are very unique in that we have such a complicated system, and we want to thank you. So you bring some recommendations this evening for the Board.
Um, the recommendation that we have up, can you guys hear me on here?
Yep.
Okay.
Just speaking.
Speak a little louder.
Is the hazardous study, we haven't done a hazardous study in the district in twenty, since twenty fifteen. And with all of the growth that we've seen and had in the district, we have a lot of hazardous routes per se that could be changed to areas where we can use walkers or crossing guards. And from a financial standpoint, it would help our district tremendously with our financial budget. So that is why we're asking for that hazardous study.
Any questions, Board, regarding the study request?
I didn't, I don't have any, well, I have one question on this one, but I more have a comment. The layout, the presentation, and the way that your memos are done should be an absolute template for this district. When we get information, when the Board gets information, to have the background, the purpose of what we're doing, the scope of work, the next steps, and where the funding is coming from, and what the financial impact and the next steps are, are critical to making decisions and to limit us then having to go to Dr. Kelgotti to do follow ups and stuff. So I just want to commend you on the layout of this. I had no questions that have anything to do with you, other than that. We do try to extend our, when we're looking for vendors out, to have multiple vendors. Was this the only type of vendor that does this? Or did you have other vendors that could?
We reached out to four vendors, but they were the only one that could provide us quotes and that would take the bid.
Perfect. I appreciate that. If you would just stick that in next time, who you reached out to, that would be great. So we know that there was that due diligence. But this was so well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have a real, why do they not want to come back with quotes?
Well, one couldn't meet, they said they couldn't do it. I don't know if they didn't have the staff to do it, but they said they couldn't do it. And then the two others didn't respond at all.
One of the key reasons, just to be blunt, is that we're a big district. We have six years square mile.
It's too much work.
And so you have to have the skill to be able to do the hazardous study that we require in our district. And we are firms, they do smaller school districts. They just don't have the bandwidth, is what we got, to be able to do ours, where we're just, we were big.
Yeah, I was surprised by the twenty two hundred dollars a school. That was, seems like a lot of work for twenty two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I agree.
Do we have a sense of how often this should be done? Like, it seems like we should have been done at some point prior to this, but is this like usually an every five year thing? Is it like when we have some new construction?
Yeah, we did a study in twenty nineteen, but that was just the Wolf Crossing area.
Okay.
And, and so we haven't done a district wide study since twenty fifteen. It depends on the growth that's happening in the district. So each district is different.
Yeah. I would, I would think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that some of the, some of this is construction areas that are now built up. So do we have, can we have a future plan where we have new stuff going up, it's a hazardous route this year, and then next year, mark it to like reassess to see, so we can track it.
Dr. Maria, to your point, a district as dynamic as we are, that is growing the way we are, it makes sense to look at doing hazardous route every couple of years. Because change happens very quickly. Now, if you're talking about a mature district that is landlocked, where there's not that much of the way of growth, you can probably go five years. But definitely nine years is too long for the profile of our district not to have done a complete hazardous route.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So can I think of this a little bit as a cost benefit? So I want to, you know, just making sure that this is easily paid for itself, paying for itself. You know, about how many routes would need to be improved, or, you know, like, how quickly could we recoup the cost of this study?
You know, it really depends. We don't want to go with any preconception. What we're doing is we've been reimagining how to run transportation efficiently. I think I've mentioned this in the past. That is one of the funds that's really, really negatively affecting the bottom line of the district. The rough projection that I did, which I'll present to the Board in February, shows that if we do not do anything significant, by twenty thirty, we'll be looking at about twenty six million dollars in deficit just in the transportation fund, which we cannot afford to do. So what we are hopeful is that there's been significant change in the development of subdivisions in the district. That some of the areas where students are being driven to school right now, with the, with the hazardous route, they should be able to walk if it's within a mile and a half of their home school. So to tell you what that impact will be right now, I think that will be speculative.
I think I'm fine if you're looking at a trajectory like that, then I, my question was moot.
Yeah, my question is really, it piggybacks on Dr. Maria was saying, what partnership, or how are we partnering with the village in this? Because as I drive around and I'm looking, I'm always looking, do we have sidewalks? And many of the subdivisions don't have sidewalks going in. And so that's the part, to me, that I know that will impact, especially like right across the street from even where we are now. And so what partnership are we doing with the village in order to ensure that sidewalks are going in as they're building?
Thank you for asking that question. We've actually been working very closely with municipal partner, the Village of Oswego, as well as the, the road construction township.
Kendall County.
Of Kendall County. And as a matter of fact, there's a subdivision that's close to OE right now, where we transport the students. And it's actually close enough, where it's less than a mile, that if there's a sidewalk, those students should be able to walk to school. And we had a meeting two weeks ago where there was a commitment made by the village, as well as the county of Kendall, where we've agreed to build the sidewalk, I believe it's Brighton Meadows, from Brighton Meadows all the way to OE. And the cost of it would be borne equally by the three municipal entity, thirty three percent. So that's an example of partnership that we engage in, and we intend to continue to do that whenever possible. So we're not bearing the burden alone. Cause we know, we all have responsibility to make sure our children are safe to and from school.
And I'm sure you'll figure this out, but there's another subdivision going in at like thirty and a half in rector. And I'm sure it's over a hundred, hundred rooftops. And so I'm sure it's a half mile down from the Wheatlands, but I'm sure that that's another opportunity. But that's just my question.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question, sorry. I was reading the end of the, like, towards the conclusion, and I'm guessing the total is sixty six thousand dollars and three thousands per school. Is this for the actual study? Like, is the study that payment different from the actual, like, forming these sidewalks? Like, or are they one, like, is this like, like little Ericsson Engineering Associates, are they paying for all of that? Like, is this like, one study is sixty six thousand dollars, three thousand per school, and then plus paying for sidewalks?
No, sidewalks is different. That's something that we do separately with the village.
And that's like, it's own separate costs?
Yes.
Okay, that's my own question.
When you estimate thirty three percent of sidewalks from here to?
Without, without biding it out, we, we estimate it, but I'm just, I'm always reluctant, without going to bed to share a number.
Okay.
Then it becomes a problem for, say, you say it was gonna cost this much.
Right, right.
So we're going out to bed, and whatever the, the bed amount is, we agree to divvy it up by thirty three percent.
So when a developer comes in and they build a subdivision, why are not sidewalks included in the, the price or the cost or whatever it is? The negotiate, why is that not a part of the negotiations? Like, we need sidewalks.
Some developers will come in with planning a variance. They'll have a unique product. They'll say, you know, we need, in order for it to be economically viable, we need a certain amount of houses, you know, and a certain amount of space. Kind of like the rental units that's up on Wolf there, speaking of planning and zoning. But Rafael, you probably have a.
No, what I was gonna say, that's, that's a good point, is that one of the key thing that will make that happen is to maintain the professional cordial relationship that we have with our taxing, all the taxing bodies now. I think once we, we make sure that we continue to do that, when they need something, we, we try to assist them. When we need something, we work collaboratively with the recognition that we serve the same master, if you will. We serve the children and the family of this community. I think as long as we do that, the conversation is easier to have. And as long as we have that conversation, it's more likely than not that we'll be successful in the partnership.
Yeah, so when we start talking about our comprehensive master facilities plan, and is this, these are the kinds of considerations that we have to think about, right? They're part, would they be part of that? It's like.
We will invite them.
Absolutely, absolutely. We will, we will.
Yeah, and my experience, we would always ask, you know, is the school district gonna be fine, you know, and this and that? If they said, well, the school district would want sidewalks, you know, that might have, you know what I'm saying? So, so being, just having that communication could have lots of benefits to the community at home.
Yeah, that was evidenced a couple of weeks ago, the village invited us to come present at their village trustee meeting to talk about the expansion and what would be the impact, and how they're considering those proposals. And what our thinking was around the demographic, the, the kind of population improvements in our area, and how to balance the tension for them in terms of approval of economic development ventures versus the impact it would have on us as a district. And I thought that was a great example of that partnership coming out in the public. I, any ventures like that, I think to your point, Madam President, that we have to think about, also the system's ability to manage itself. I think Mr. Obafemi and Ms. Mosley are bringing a particular skill set and knowledge base around this work, and so they're able to inform and make decisions. Tonight, we have two proposals, the, the route study, the routing, upgrade to our routing software, and as well as the study. It's been nine years. So the question becomes that as we strengthen and we provide coordination across the system, we're able to take on bigger projects.
Yeah.
And big, and that's, that's the result of the investment the Board made last year. Let's just be very clear. The investment of the Board in terms of staffing and supports are yielding the kinds of recognition of required improvements that we may have foregone, not for anybody's purposeful fault, but just because the system has now shifted.
One, one other consideration, excuse me, one other consideration is I remember the village talking about roundabouts going all the way down thirty. And if we start considering kids walking across those streets, I would just ask that we also reconsider stoplights versus roundabouts. It would be very hard for a kid to walk past a roundabout. Then it would be a stoplight. And so those are the considerations that we should have with the village, just to talk about a continuous flow of traffic roundabout versus how would they cross the street.
That's a good point. Thank you.
But I think, and also, I think all this is relevant, but that stuff is another subject matter, another agenda item. This in front of us, what this study will also do is give you an opportunity to just maybe move a bus stop from one cross street to another because of the results of this. So I just want to make sure that we are staying in line with specifically what this is asking us for. We'll give you, we hope, the data that if we have some bus stops that need to be reconsidered, we can do so with this information. And we know we've had parents reach out to us and say, we don't feel this stop is very safe. Can we look into moving it or something? So.
Well, the reason it was relevant is because they're considering kids that can walk. So if you're, if you're considering them with this study, if they can walk, but there's no sidewalks, then that's the reason why.
Oh, I agree, but I know we started talking about the other sidewalk. We're gonna talk about that later, right?
The intergovernmental.
Yes, cause I have a lot of questions about that.
I don't know if that's the same one that we're working, but, yes.
I had a question, I had a question. Sorry, for you again, my bad. Um, in the introduction, you stated we're strongly recommending hiring Ericsson Engineering Associates to perform a detailed assessment of hazardous walking routes. I just wanted to ask a little bit in detail why you would want us to hire them, and how thorough they are with this study. Cause I understand the purpose of the study, but I kind of want to know a little bit more about what goes into study and why you would want to consider this specific association.
Good question.
Yes.
They are a leader in the study for hazardous studies, and so they are one of the main companies that do that, that provide that. But out of the four, they were the only one that gave us a quote back. The other two did not respond, and then the, the third one that did not respond was not able to handle it. So, very good question. They, they actually go out and they survey the areas to see if they're safe walk paths or patterns. Sidewalks, like Mr. Gatewood mentioned, some of those things that would consider, that would consider our routes safe. And then what routes are, or what paths are considered hazardous. And so they could do a vast study of our entire district for that amount.
I don't know if you ever noticed, but do you know what criteria do they cover on whether or not a location is hazardous or not?
So I can try to answer it.
Okay, thank you.
The, the Illinois Department of Transportation actually have a guideline that, that is used. That's the benchmark. So based on the expertise, what is hazardous, what is not, the volume of traffic, the ability of students to be able to walk across safely, those are the criteria that they will use in doing their study.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, if you don't mind waiting, stay for the next topic. I know that you are bringing a recommendation to upgrade the service that we have currently with Versitran. So this would be an, an upgrade to that current software. So we are currently with Versitran, so this would be expanding and basically bringing their software into the twenty first century. Cause right now, I understand they are using a DOS system and the particular software we use. Anybody remember the floppy disks that we used to use? Yes. So, Versitran, we have the older model, so when we called for tech support a while back, they said, what version are you using? Turned out we were, we've been using for, uh, a long, twenty years maybe? Uh, the one that was the DOS version of it, so their tech support had to call somebody in, uh, wherever they still use DOS and get for support. So, are you familiar with DOS?
No, but I can do it in Fortran.
You can do it in Fortran, so it was close to Fortran. So this is a true story. So the verse, the version that we've been using for our geo mapping. And so we really need to urgently move to essentially move that. And so we're bringing tonight, so you wanna talk a little bit about how that has hindered your ability recently? And what has led, that has led to us?
There are several things with that software that hindered our ability to efficiently route students. Um, our maps are not updated. Um, all of the growth that we've seen over the years is not in our mapping system. And so we are hand drawing them in and they're not efficient. Some of the, uh, programs that we've changed, our system, like Power School with, that was new over a year ago. Um, we didn't do a proper, uh, migration with, uh, Versitran. And that system being so old couldn't handle the lift. And so this year, we kinda went back to the old school days of manually routing with, with the map. To get our.
Can you remind the board how many students we, we move on buses, please?
We have over twelve thousand on buses every day.
On buses, okay.
Yes. So, our, that is just an update. That software that we currently use is, is old. I used it in two thousand and five, so it's the same system we've had for over twenty years. Um, this system that we're asking to upgrade, it will modernize our system. Um, that mapping will be updated regularly. Um, so when there's growth in it, and we're talking about all of this growth that we're doing in Oswego, that will be updated in our mapping system. Um, and it's a web-based solution, so it will help us be more efficient over the years as we move and grow, um, as a district. But yeah, it's just really outdated system. A lot of manual work has to go into that system to route.
Board, I, I wanna say that this matter was brought with some urgency because of we are, we are already planning our timeline for the start of the school year next year.
Yeah.
And so because we are in a position where we are currently partners with Versitran, that company, this would really be a upgrade to that software application. The, 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 we had the possibility of going to another company at this point would be to, to turn the system around. Even currently with this opportunity, we're really pushing the, I guess, it was even said to me, we can't even do, initially I was told, we can't even potentially upgrade this DOS system for next year. You can be candid, I came back, I said, no, I cannot accept that, we have to change this now. But that means the, the window essentially to try to bring in other vendors, we really needed to go with our current vendor because the, the, the opportunity to consider other oppor, options would have essentially made next year look like this year in terms of the software. Nobody would've been able to do that. And so that's the, why the recommendation from the transportation department, well then we need to really work on upgrading this system, not another one. Questions, yeah?
Please, this has nothing to do with you at all. I, um, I'm so frustrated. Every year we go through some version of this and every year we hear that it's different.
Which part, the, the routing system?
Yeah.
Okay.
And on April eleventh of twenty twenty-three, we put in Tyler Versitran's routing and planning. We approved it and the acquisition cost was three hundred and twenty thousand with an annual service and licensing, so licensing of forty-four. So, I don't know if we're talking about different versions, but we just did this in April of twenty-three. And so to hear that we're doing this again or to see this, I'm not saying it's not right, but I was very confused because I feel like every year we're doing this and I'm, must not be understanding something.
This is the fir, I, I wasn't here in twenty-three, so I apologize. So thank you for that historical context, historical context. I think what I'm, and I, so I think in terms of a question to look into is a great question. So what happened then? And so between now and the next board meeting, we will definitely look into that and I appreciate the feedback. And we can look into what exactly was purchased then and why, what, what account was not brought forward? And let's, let's bring it, we'll bring it back to the next board meeting, so thank you.
I really think it's important to understand the investments that we've made in the last couple of years when it has come to us and been told that we have to do this. And these were the reasons, student, um, getting checked in on the buses, Tyler Drive would allow us to check in and out through the software, urgent route changes and additions, and then it would help new and substitute drivers not familiar with the area. So I just need to understand, I'm not saying this doesn't need to be done, but we literally have done this three times since I've been on the board. This would be the third time. And so I don't know how we can keep coming back to the drawing board every year.
Do we even know, do we even know that this three hundred thousand dollars was spent?
Yeah. So, so that was the acquisition of the, what we kinda refer to as like the, here comes the bus software?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not the routing software.
Yeah, it's not the routing software. It was the implementation of the GPS and the contracted bus routes and the ability to have like the turn-by-turn and the iPads on the bus and eventually be able to take attendance of students getting on and off with proximity cards. That was what approved in twenty twenty-three.
Are we using it?
Portions of it, we do have, we're coming in now, not all of it. Yes, yeah, it was all done.
So there's two different tools.
Yeah, part of the problem we're running into, based on my understanding, is that since the Versitran software is, uh, is a legacy system, is, uh, outdated, the architecture doesn't work well with the here comes the bus.
But, but I'm, what I'm saying is before we do something new, we've already, we already made an investment of close to four hundred thousand dollars. Is all this stuff going to work together? And can we just understand where we're at? What I'm trying to get to is, and you guys walk in, you've walked into a system that was already set up and you've seen the chaos and the problems. What, where can we get to and what decisions can we make that honor both what we've already done and what we need to do to make sure we're getting to a better system? And I just?
So this is part, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I can add some details. From based off of what I heard you say, the Tyler Drive and the system, that has nothing to do with the routing software. That is, like Teresa said, that is our, um, GPS system. That was to purchase tablets and put them on our buses. And those tablets would give you the ability to, uh, for the drivers to see their turn-by-turn directions as well as operate our parent app, um, check students on and off a bus, which is something that's beneficial from a Medicaid standpoint, that we need that. I will say that it's not fully functionable, but we're working on getting it, um, product so that we can utilize those services that we purchased last year.
That's, that's my question.
With our new routing software.
All right.
Okay.
So would you, I mean, I know this is probably watering at the bridge, but would you say that, what, what would, if you were sitting there last year, would you have said that the priority was the, the computers on the bus? Or was the priority the Versitran updated software?
I would say the routing software would've been my first priority.
Okay, all right, I get it.
Yeah, I remember a lot of these conversations and I remember we outsourced it, remember that? There was?
And we brought it back, by the way.
There was, there was a lot of?
We actually, we came last year.
Hold on Rafael, can you just, yes, you were saying?
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm, I'm done.
No, uh, Dominic said outsourcing, and I wanted to just clarify. Uh, if you remember, we came to you in the spring.
Yep.
To outsource the routing.
Yep.
And the, uh, the firm was having problem with, uh, with doing what they, they signed up for.
Yep.
And we fired them.
You said we fired them?
We fired them. And we negotiated, uh, an exit to the contract. And of the three hundred thousand that they were hoping to get, we negotiated that they get eight thousand and nothing more. And they signed an agreement and we all walked away. So, what we're trying to do, we on it. I mean, if we, if we agreed to something, if the vendor's not doing it, we're very quick in saying, we would not go for that. We will hold you responsible for what you promised. If you can't deliver what you promised, we're not gonna stick around and play with you. So that's what we've been doing.
Okay, and so then I understand, I, do I hear that there's a time-sensitive nature to this, um, re, request?
Versitran.
To vers, to Versitran.
Because we're bringing it back internally. We had outsourced it, I didn't do a good job. So we fired them, we brought it, we, we, we're bringing it back in. Because the skillset of the person who's managing transportation now feels comfortable and has experience in being able to route internally.
Understood.
Yes, I get it.
And, and this is an infrastructure upgrade, one of the advantages here is that we're not talking about a purchase of a new system for three hundred fifty thousand. We're talking about forty-six thousand, which is really gonna be an upgrade to the current system. And we can move quickly because those relationships have established. What we are doing, and we weren't, it is coming to your question about, it may feel like sometimes piecemeal.
Yes.
You wanna avoid that, right? So, I can totally agree with that. And so what I will, I can assure the board that within the next two to three months, we are returning to the board with a comprehensive review of the transportation problem.
Perfect.
We actually met with principals today and invited principals to join that process. We're gonna be inviting parents to join that process and thinking about how we can improve, once and for all, the transportation problems. But it is, to be honest with you, there is a bit of a, uh, factor of like collage where we're, we're, we're working through like, okay, so there's an infrastructure issue, Ms. Mosley's been working with just getting it off the ground versus fixing it. I talk to parents quite often, why can't you fix it today? What is wrong with you all, you know? And I totally understand that, but when I explain to them that we have an older system for routing and then they're like, well, this sounds like it's gonna take a long time. Yeah, we underst, they're like, well, that's gonna take, yes, but no. Now we have the individual who understands the comprehensive nature of it and is working very closely with Mr. Obafemi, school leaders to bring it, and we will bring that, both a up, update to the board about where we are and the future of thinking around how we will fix this permanently, so.
And we know that financially, the transportation department is in need of ideas and creative solutions to get us out of, uh, deficit. But I'm wondering if in the past, all these patchworks have created kinda the deficit that we find ourselves in? So I would rather take our subject matter expert that we have finally have confidence in and say, this is what we really need. This is what's going to be a game changer for us, so that we don't have to go into the first couple of weeks of school in chaos like we always do. So, yes.
I'll, I'll give you an example, um, the union has been asking for a number of years for just some basic information around routing, impact and busing fees. So if there was some potential, hypothetically, we're talking about schedules changes, right? So I'm gonna, these are all, this is not a decision, please, anybody listening, I am not proposing any change.
Disclaimer, disclaimer, disclaimer.
Disclaimer, disclaimer, disclaimer. However, the transportation department has said, okay, so they said, we'll get back to you, right? But then when you look at the software, you look at the, the erroneous, uh, routing structures or the, the routes, I, 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 I apologize. You can speak more clearly. You know, can you tell me exactly how much we could save by doing this and that? It's really, uh, a almost impossible task because you're talking about twelve thousand riders. And so to manipulate the system to give you a more efficient system is really challenging, right? Am I speaking truth to them?
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, so to say to the union, here's what the cost saving would be. You know, the union has stories about like, once we were told it was four million, then we were told that if we do this, it's a hundred and sixty thousand. And then we were told it's this amount. So, now we understand why that was a challenge? And I think that that is, um, I, I, I just wanna say that we don't know what the conditions were that caused those challenges. We weren't there.
Right.
And those are real, I believe in all my sincere parts, that people do the best they can all the time. And they were doing it back then with what they had.
Right.
Well, today, we know that in order to do this well, we need to upgrade this. And we need to also start to pay attention, and Dr. Dubiel has been thinking about this as well. It's like, how are we, how are we thinking about our programming? How are we thinking about our, our bell schedules? How are we thinking about the way in which we are, uh, supporting riders who may not, who may be within the mile, but they have a hazardous routes, which is why we brought you. So, in order for us to even do the analysis, right, for a comprehensive plan? So in order for us to even get to the point where we can do an effective analysis of what's happening with transportation? We needed some basic things, like let's put some, so we can use this table of analysis? We need some legs, and the legs are a better improved routing system.
We need a baseline.
We need a baseline, thank you.
And I, and I'll be the one that steps in it with the disclaimer, but it's something that Dr. Kincaid will tell you that years ago we were really fighting hard for was to talk about maybe changing the elementary and high school schedules to give our high school students more sleep, because we know statistically that they need that sleep and so forth. And we could never get past transportation.
That, you're, you're familiar with the conversation?
Yeah, and so it would be great if also when we know we're moving forward, that this is what's been holding that up or challenging that and being able to have the opportunity to even have those discussions. Because transportation will look at us and say, we can't even talk about this.
Right, and I'm gonna put a plug for our public forum on November fourth at seven PM. It's a great opportunity for families to come and speak to these kinds of concerns. Because at that night, we will really think about our strategic priorities that we'll be launching in the spring. Not everything can be done at once, so what comes first, right? So, is it the bell schedule? Is it the transportation? Is it the right resources? Is it a new field? What is it that's gonna come first? So we wanna invite everybody on November fourth to our public forum. Will you, the board will be there to engage in these discussions. Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you so much.
Talk about a master closer.
November fourth, y'all.
November fourth.
I also just wanted to highlight real quick, like, this is like the third or fourth time in this meeting that I can see the investment paying off in the human, the humans that we put into the system last year. Um, so thank you to my fellow board members, obviously, and, um, you know, the team is doing a great job.
Great job.
Okay, um, I wanna invite, um, Mr. Obafemi to discuss the school maintenance project grant.
Thank you. Uh, boy, around the same time last year, we brought this, uh, to you. The, uh, the state of Illinois appropriates about forty-eight million dollars, uh, every year to be distributed to school district. And, uh, this is in form of a grant, and this is a matching grant. The, uh, if the district comes up with a maintenance, uh, uh, project that is fifty thousand, the state will match it for the same amount. It could be more than fifty thousand, but no less than fifty thousand. So, what we are requesting is, we are doing some, uh, some work in, in Grant Park, the pavement replacement project that, uh, we teamed up, it's gonna cost one point four million dollars. And we asking to use fifty thousand in the, uh, school maintenance, a matching grant to pay fifty thousand towards that one point four million dollars. Another for us to be considered for the award, the board has to approve this in a, in an open session. That's why we bring it to you. And last year, we, we requested the same amount, we were awarded, and we used that for the RTU at Plank. Replacement at Plank.
So, just so I understand, so it's, it's potentially a one point four million dollar project? And the grant states the maximum that the grant will return is dollar for dollar up to fifty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Now, there's a possibility if not all school districts apply for it, then if there's extra money, then the state may then inform the folks who have applied for it, there's extra money. And then we can apply for the second round. But with, uh, eight hundred and something school district, that is highly unlikely.
Yeah, one of the things.
Highly unlikely.
And the one, and the, go ahead. The one point four that, uh, we've already discussed that, that's already been baked in, okay.
That's part of our capital project, that, yeah.
No, I, I think you answered it, just a question I had was, so fifty thousand dollars per district, basically? And then they, okay. So it's the six biggest?
Yes, I mean, this is in lieu of the, if you remember.
It's not a weighted thing, huh?
Right, a few years ago, the state actually had a list, the capital project, uh, grant that we've still been waiting for. We were top of the line, we were looking to get about forty-two million dollars when the state stopped appropriating that. So we're still working to try to see if we can, uh, get that funding for the operation.
Fifty thousand is good though, it's better than nothing.
Okay, any final question? Thank you, Mr. Obafemi. Uh, next, uh, Dr. Kincaid and Ms. Obafemi will be speaking to the early childhood block grant refund.
Okay, so this is an interesting situation that is not in my nature to do is to return money to the state.
Uh-oh.
So, in this particular case, the, uh, the district received a set amount, uh, of, of one point three million dollars through the preschool for all. And then to, in May, you know, the allocation, the fiscal year starts in July. Then in May, couple of months before the end of the fiscal year, the state said, oh, we got more money. And you all can get an additional two point eight million. And the year was almost over. We're like, we're game. We'll try to see how we can use the fund to supplement our preschool program. And as much as we tried to, we couldn't spend all of it because the timing was late. And what we also have to be careful about, we can't supply, which means we can't use the money to pay for something that we should be paying for out of local funds. So the limitations to how we can spend the money. So we got two point eight million dollars. We were able to spend just about everything, but twenty and thirty-five thousand. And.
So it's a feel-good story.
Yes.
I thought you'd be ready to say, we got to give them two million dollars back.
No, two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, this was a.
It's only a quarter of a million, that's all.
The group is saying about this situation, normally, you spend the money, the state, then you file for reimbursement. In preschool for all, they actually give you the money up front, which we love. And, but we couldn't legally, without getting in trouble, spend all the money. So the part that we couldn't spend, because we tried, because there's certain limitations to what you can use it for. And we want to be compliant at all time. And this is the amount that we have to give back to the state, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So they called us last week. They sent us an email, said, we want our money back.
It's not an issue for debate. I, but I will say that I think this, again, speaks to the importance of our strategic planning process because it's not what we will do in it. And I'll bring more information as we move deeper into our strategic planning work. Is that what this will, the tighter our strategic plans, then the more you understand what is being spent for what. And we can better invest in those areas that become supplemental and not are required. So, and Mr. Obafemi is launching the budget process this evening, so we'll hear more about that tonight. So, other questions?
So if we all vote no, do we have to send it back?
We still have to send it back. By statute.
Actually, it's more information.
Yeah, it's not really, yeah.
Because we owe the money, we didn't spend it, we got to give it back.
I'm not going to, it's B G.
Right, I'm not going to nobody.
Including A B F and everything else, we got big money coming from the state.
I heard it was the, the timing. So are other districts in this situation as well, that they also receive money?
See, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Yeah. Thank you. Next, twenty-five, twenty-six, budget calendar and designee, Ms. Obafemi. First, I'm going to just acknowledge, last year, when I did my own search, and if anybody can find it, I think last year was the first time that this was really brought as an item to the agenda for board review and approval. I had not seen it in prior year agendas upon my review. So I want to thank you, Mr. Obafemi, for bringing the board and this process up to legal code requirements. Mr. Obafemi?
So by state law, and I cited the, the school code and the state law there, a school district is required to designate someone to prepare the budget and also to have a timeline of the budget development. That's required by, and that's essentially what this is. So the board approving this today officially kicks off a budget development process for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. I know when I tell folks that, they look at me sideways. They're like, we're not even done with twenty-four. You're talking about twenty-six. But this is the budget. We always, almost two years ahead of the current.
All right, thank you, Mr. Obafemi. Next, I want to invite Dr. Mujo and Dr. Kincaid. New I, oh no, this is Dr. Mujo, new A I S B resolutions.
So next, so when, I will be representing the school board at the delegate assembly at the triple I conference that's coming up. During that assembly, there will be some resolutions proposed. And as a board, we would like to hear or come to a decision on what my vote will be as a representative of the board. Just a little background, at the policy, Policy and Legislative Committee, Mary Jo, myself, and Jared looked at all of the resolutions and have some recommendations. But we also would like to hear from all board members about how they would like us to vote or how they would like me to vote during the delegation process. So all of you should have a sheet that lists the different resolutions. So I'm just going to read from that sheet at the top so that we know what that first section is and I'm speaking correctly about it. So it says, "All the below resolutions will be placed on a consent, a consent agenda for a vote during the I A S B delegate assembly. If any are removed from the consent agenda, what is your board's direction as to whether the following resolutions should be adopted by the I A S B delegate assembly?" So for these resolutions, we should determine whether or not I, as the representative, will be voting yes or no to these resolutions. I will say, just a summary of the Policy and Legislative Committee, for all of these resolutions, both Jared, myself, and Mary Jo agreed that we would likely be inclined to vote yes to these. But I invite the board to let us know if you want to talk about each one individually or what would be the best direction to take a little straw poll so that I can vote in representative, as a representative of the board.
I will say, last year or in the year before, we all voted individually and then consensus won. And then Ursula put it on the website. So I don't know if we want to do that again.
Do we want any discussion before our votes? Or has everyone had an opportunity to review the resolutions?
Well, I've had an opportunity to review the resolutions. I agree with all except for number three. So I don't know if, I don't know how.
Do you want a discussion or are you?
I would like a discussion.
Sure.
On number three?
Yeah, number three.
Well, why don't we just start at the top, right? Let's start at the top and then go down and then if there's.
Let's vote, and then when we get to a no vote, we'll discuss.
So the first one is a resolution related to dual language. If we could, we're doing a straw poll, not an official, you know, vote. So I guess if you would like to vote yes for this one, you want to raise your hand. And I think that includes everyone on the board. So, and Jared has also left me his suggestions here. He's also liked to vote yes.
Okay. It's basically just for the public. It's affirming that the attainment of the Illinois Civil Literacy satisfies the Illinois World Language requirement for graduation. So we would like to support that.
Yes. The second resolution, resolution is about E B F authorized charter school funding. We also suggested a yes vote here. We can do a straw poll by raising our hands yes. Jared also votes yes on that one. So that'll be a yes.
So this holds private schools to the same account as public schools as far as how they are funded, rather than an average of the public schools?
I wouldn't say private, I would say charter. State authorized charter.
Yeah, state authorized charter schools.
Very specific, yeah. Right now, they get.
I wasn't reading it.
Right now, they get a per head student fee. And it could be, you know, twelve thousand or fourteen thousand or whatever. This would basically show that they would get funded with E B F, just like the rest of the schools.
Based on their population of students.
The third one refers to tax increment financing or T I F accountability. We had suggested a yes vote on this. We can do a straw poll.
Before we do the straw poll, can I hear what?
Oh.
Oh, sure, yes, please.
Yes.
You know, I agree with create a T I F approval process and empowers taxing bodies to ensure fairness. This is kind of on the page twelve, specific measures. This is where I have kind of some of the problems. Authorize a joint review board to approve or disapprove the creation of a T I F. Ensure the voting structure reflects the proportional impact of a proposed T I F. But then the next one, require disclosure to taxpayers on the cost of a T I F to the community prior to its approval. So T I F, to me, isn't, if a building is, if something is built because of the T I F, what is, what is the cost? What is, what does that even mean? I don't understand what that could even mean. Because we're, we basically, you know, would have been getting, let's say, a thousand dollars for that property. We could have gotten that forever. But because it was built, we're going to get a thousand dollars for twenty years and then a lot more after that. So what's really the cost? If it wasn't for the T I F, would that have been built? So I don't really, to me, this is, this is definitely has a slant to it. Include information about the impact of a T I F on tax bills of all taxpayers impacted by T I F. To me, this is kind of the same philosophy. It's basically saying, and it's not even taking into account the impact fees that are provided. We, there's per student, you know, fees that we get in from a T I F district. There's per library card the library district gets. So the cost part is kind of also very gray.
But the cost part could also be the impact on your tax bill.
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
So if the impact is, again, kind of depends on whether that would have been built without a T I F. So if that would have been built without a T I F, then yes.
But I think it's assuming that it's going to be because it's a T I F.
Right, so then there's no real cost then.
Transparency.
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's a weird one.
Maybe, maybe cost is, well, it says cost, but I want to ask an opposite question. Could this be, because I read somewhere earlier where it was the potential loss of revenue for the district? And so could it be that this is really just to influence more transparency?
Yeah, that's why I like one, two, and three, and six. I like.
You mean as far as the bullet points?
Yeah, the bullet points. Publish annual tax revenues from the T I F and make that information available to the community. Ensure the voting structure. It's these disclosures, and it's only talking about the cost.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer. But I'm assuming, and this is not a reason to vote yea or nay, to make assumptions. But when, when it was talking about transparency, in my mind, those three were to prevent something that had happened.
Yes.
That they had, that had happened. And so that's the reason why. I don't know how it would be executed, but after, since everything else was really talking about making sure there's more transparency around it, my assumption was that those additional bullet points was to cover what had happened.
That's a good point.
No, yeah, and I get that, but I feel like it's a lens.
No, I, I hear that.
It's not a story.
No, I, I hear it. Yeah, I hear it.
That they're asking for. They're, they had a problem, this would have resolved their problem.
Exactly, I agree.
You know, it's not necessarily everybody's problem. And this is, this is.
I mean, I don't think we can nuance.
Right.
It's either yes or no.
No, I don't.
Yes or no, and you.
So to me, it would be a no.
So let's take the straw poll.
And, and I've done this before, and those nuances cause these things to be voted no. Because we're not voting, we're voting for the entirety of the.
Correct.
You know, of it. We're not, we're not voting for bullet points one, two, three, and six.
And to your point, and a couple, excuse me, a couple of the other ones that were recommended, no. It was basically no because of how it would be executed. So I don't know how you would calculate the cost if.
I could, I could, I could picture how they would calculate the cost. But again, it's dependent on whether or not something would have been built because of the T I F or not. These are, it sounds like Skokie. I can't even imagine that there should be a T I F district in Skokie because it's all landlocked.
Yeah.
We're not Skokie.
Yeah, and the T I F district will be, will be approved prior to possibly knowing what was going to be developed on it later. So it's, is that typically the case?
But I think this also helps us get to the point of.
We can't have you weigh in, you know? That's, that's why.
Is it impacting the school district? And I think that's the potential of what we need to know.
Correct.
What is the spirit of this particular one?
What I would say is they're good T I F and they're bad T I F.
Yes.
That's the thing. And in my opinion, having the school district weigh in doesn't prevent a T I F from taking place. I think all it does, it allows the district that depends on property tax to have a voice in the process. Because I've seen T I F used, just to be frank, as a political gimmick to friends and people who are highly placed.
And that's what I feel like it's guarding against.
That will otherwise be developed anyway.
But this, this, this is us wanting to create a T I F approval process that empowers taxing bodies to ensure fairness. So this, this changes that, which I love. It's like, this is, I don't know.
You should vote your conscience though.
Yes.
Vote no.
Yeah, I think that if the text against that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's probably, that's, that's good, and, yeah, I don't know, man. But, but it feels like, it's just, it's designed to make T I Fs, good T I Fs fail as well.
All right, straw poll, straw.
Straw poll.
Straw poll, I got to get my vowels right. Yes for this one? And no? The next one is regarding faith laws, centralized state agency for E H Rs or employment history reviews. This would advocate for a centralized entity responsible for employment history reviews and streamline the process and allow for more accurate and consistent completion of employment history reviews. Any discussion? Yes, straw poll, yes.
Oh, yes, yeah.
By the way, Jared also voted yes on number four and, or three and four. Number five, healthcare coverage? Should I give a quick summary here?
Sure.
The committee determined that the high cost of providing high-quality health insurance to district employees and the limited availability of insurance plan for school districts in multiple counties throughout the state is a serious problem. Providing school districts with the option to join central management services would allow more health insurance choices for employees while decreasing costs for school districts. Discussion? Straw poll, yes? Jared was also a yes vote for that one. And then number six is regarding polling place amendment to position statement seven dot oh eight. So just a quick summary, the committee determined that if a school is not being used as a polling place, the safety of the students is not at risk. Therefore, it should be left up to local control as to whether the school district observes Election Day as a designated state holiday. Any discussion?
I just take, first of all, for voting, I'm voting yes. But it gives the school the power to refuse to be a polling place, which is not there before.
I believe strongly in this because it represents local control and then we keep local control for our school districts, so.
Does it do that?
Yes.
It does.
It says.
If, if it, if it's not, what did it say? It said if it's not.
Refuse to be used as a polling place during elections for student safety reasons.
Yeah, if it gives the public access to the building. Or refuse to shut down if something.
If they're not a polling place, there's no reason they should have to lose a day of instruction.
And, and they are the ones that determine whether or not they're a polling place? Who gets to determine that?
A school? No, your county clerk does.
Well, okay, so then.
Well, the county clerk determines, and this would, this would overrule that allegedly.
Oh, it would? Okay.
Allegedly.
So that, that first sentence is a change, right?
I cover every day.
So does someone call you to say, hey?
As a school district.
They call you to say, we want to use you as a polling place?
Yeah, I mean, typically, that's, there's a partnership between buildings and operations. They'll put in a permit request, and then they'll, they'll put in a permit request, and then that'll be reviewed. I've never heard it, it's often coordinated with the superintendent. And it's really a civic, there's a civic kind of entry, common courtesy. You're probably going to say a courtesy to do that. I think it does, I, I have observed, and so it does require a lot of coordination, which is why some districts have moved to that being a day of no school across, you know, a lot of places to, because it does create a burden for the school, particularly with safety for our students.
Absolutely, okay. But there are some districts that have polling places in their district, so they're getting unfairly burdened by that.
All right, straw poll for number six, yes? Jared also marked yes for that one as well.
Shh, he's coming, he's coming.
The next section on your document.
I'm glad you came back for this part.
Are resolutions that received a do not adopt recommendation. Are resolutions that received a do not adopt recommendation from the IASB Resolutions Committee. So I'll just again read from the document so it's clear. The below resolutions may be appealed by the submitting district. Any resolution that is appealed requires a two-thirds vote at the delegate assembly to be reconsidered. If a do not adopt resolution is appealed, what is your board's direction towards delegate as to whether the following resolutions, A, should be reconsidered by the delegate assembly, and B, if reconsidered, should be adopted by the IASB delegate assembly? So these most likely, from my reading, would not be called, but in case that they are called, we wouldn't want to determine, one, we would recommend that they be reconsidered, and then if they are reconsidered and brought to the floor, if they should be adopted. So the first one is about cellphone usage, and if that should be reconsidered...
Just tell me, fuck off.
The first resolution on the do not adopt item is about cellphone usage, and so we need to decide if that should be reconsidered.
Can you give a little sample?
Yeah, I'll just read real quick. The committee agreed that cellphone usage during school is a growing concern and that research shows that it can negatively impact instructional time and student mental health. However, the committee did not support a statewide mandate and found that cellphone usage is best governed locally. Committee members determined that cellphone policy should pose, could pose safety, student discipline, and fiscal challenges for school districts. Given these challenges, this is best left to each local district. Last, there is a current IASB press policy already available to districts. Press policy provides school boards with flexibility to create a cellphone usage policy specific to each district's needs. So we need to determine if we want to reconsider that one.
Can we just clear that in this category, no means do not adopt?
Right, means...
Because we had that confusion last year.
No means...
Do not adopt.
Do not reconsider.
Well, no, I'm just saying overall.
But no, it's do not adopt, right?
And then the second no is do not adopt.
Okay, so...
So if we say do not reconsider, we would likely vote do not adopt.
Right.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying for, because, nevermind.
I remember last year, it was my problem.
We want each of our... We want to have local control over the policies on cellphone usage.
Right.
We want local control.
We want local control.
So if we would want that, then we would vote no in regards to the reconsideration.
Yeah, so no, no.
No, no, but let's take a straw poll. Are we no, no on the straw poll?
No, no.
No, no. Yeah, she's...
Go ahead. That's why they're doing it. I'm so tired.
All right, the next one, eight A, Office of Inspector General. I'll just do a summary again. While committee members agreed that oversight and accountability for public schools is of the utmost importance, the committee identified many laws and processes currently in place that already apply. Thus, legal remedies already exist to hold school districts accountable, and expanding or creating a new state agency is not necessary. The recommendation is do not adopt.
I'd actually like to talk about this one a bit. Um, is that okay?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, because I'm a firm believer that any, like, election or a vote like this, I think sometimes we've lost sight of some of these pieces, and I think this is a great opportunity to have this conversation. I personally would be somebody who says, you know, yes, let's reconsider, but this sounds strange, but I'm a no vote. In other words, I want the dialogue because I think the dialogue is necessary for people on the local level. There are too many instances of local-level leaders taking advantage of gaps in the knowledge of those they serve. And so I think this is something that they need to discuss. This is not the right way to go about this, but I think the dialogue is important. And if it does get to that point, Amy, I would really like to hear from you how that dialogue went. I don't support the measure because of the way it's written, and I agree adding another layer of government and all this. But I do believe having the conversation is important because it acknowledges there is a problem out there.
I don't disagree there's a problem, I just don't think that that's gonna be the solution.
That's why I'm a no for the solution, but I'm a yes for the conversation.
Yeah.
So we're gonna vote as straw poll for eight A. Do we, yes, to be reconsidered?
I'm a yes.
Sure. Reconsider, yes, okay.
Three, are you a yes, Latonya? You are a yes?
So that's eight B, right?
Nope.
No, eight A.
Eight A is reconsider.
So how many is that?
Should be considered.
We lose it.
Yes?
We are reconsidering, maybe.
Do you want...
Yes.
To be reconsidered, okay. Raise your hand if you would like that to be reconsidered.
Re...
If it's brought to that.
So yes to reconsider.
Yes to reconsider.
Based on what you just said?
Yes.
Reconsider, but vote no, but what if...
We haven't gotten to vote no yet. We're just reconsidering the measure right now.
I'll reconsider the measure.
Okay, so that's five. And then two no votes.
Rather consider, now reconsidered is on the table.
Okay, so five.
If reconsidered should be adopted by the delegate assembly, that's where we are now?
Yeah, so if reconsidered, should this be adopted?
No.
No.
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No.
Okay, we're all no on that one. Good point. All right, nine A is faith laws. Committee members determined that employment history reviews for current employees could cause confusion and pose legal and collective bargaining challenges for school districts. Given these challenges, these employment decisions are best left to each district. Do we want that to be reconsidered, yes or no?
No.
Yes.
Why? Reconsider? Okay, but in the top one, you voted yes for faith law.
But that was for new employees.
Two different things, though.
Yeah, that's for creating an agency.
The top is about creating a centralized agency, which I want them to do.
Yeah.
The bottom is about not only should new employees, but old employees should know as well. I'm a hard line on faith law. Brian, don't kill me, I'm sorry.
So is the word current that you're...
I know that it requires a lot of work, but just because you're a veteran employee doesn't mean we shouldn't know that you're... You have information in your background that you should not be working with students.
Brian, give it a quick...
So in other words, if somebody got over... If the vetting process didn't produce or disclose, discover something?
Correct.
Oh, so prior to faith law, if...
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I get that.
I get that, too.
I want to hear from Dr. Swimki.
Dr. Swimki?
He smiles.
So you're correct in the sense that prior to July one of 2023, no employee's background goes through the process with the three misconduct questions that somebody that just got hired this evening. Okay, so that was the cut from when the law was passed.
So if we have an employee that has been here for twenty years and got their background checked, and within the last couple of years before faith law did something that should be reported, and it hasn't been, we're just gonna let that go, and I just...
Reported or convicted of? I mean, and I'm...
Whatever, if she shows up in the history.
Whatever shows up on a report.
So how does it get there, if they're convicted of a crime?
Or if...
If they're convicted or if they're arrested?
We would know that.
Arrested.
Don't we get that? How do we get that?
We'll be notified.
Oh, we're notified.
Different district.
Okay, so...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If they're convicted and arrested, if they're convicted, yeah, we will know that. How would we not know that if they come from another...
How would we not know they're convicted if they come from another district? I don't understand that.
We're talking about if they're here...
I understand that. How would we not know if they weren't convicted of another...
No, we're talking about current employees, not...
Okay.
Didn't we just have that issue?
It used to be Governor Bogovic passed this law back in 2003, I believe, or there... So all employees who were employed before then, they were grandfathered in. So they didn't have to, if they were continuously employed here since then, they didn't have to go through a background check before faith law was passed.
So you say, yeah, I... So you're saying before 2003 or 2023?
No, it was 2003.
Okay.
Before 2003, there was no...
We had no background check before 2003.
We didn't. It was when Bogovic was in office that he passed the, that he signed into law, the legislation that required that anyone who was hired from that day on
So I just want to...
Has to be background checked.
Right, so anyone who was born, anyone who was hired between 2003 and faith's law has, we're gonna know if you were convicted of a crime. So are we checking all of those people who already passed a background check, too? I'm just asking when it comes to...
But that's kind of the point, is it becomes burdensome on the district.
Right.
And you guys can vote that way, I just don't.
A hundred percent. I think I have a problem with, hey, listen, if what you're saying, and I don't know why you wouldn't be accurate, right? I mean, this is why you're here. But if what you're saying is accurate, I understand the conversation about before 2003, but I'm struggling with understanding why we're looking for twenty years of people who already had to pass a background check.
Do you know how many people have seniority and it could be?
I don't, no, I'm not following that. I'm not, I'm not understanding that. Like, you're saying somebody before 2003?
Possibly.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. But then, that's not what this reads, is it? It's not making the distinction, it's not making the distinction of before 2003.
Saying everybody, yeah.
Right.
Well, I will say that it reads to be granted the ability to require current employees. So school districts wouldn't have to, they would just have the ability. So it kind of goes to almost a local control type of thing. I don't know, just...
Okay.
I'm just reading it.
Everybody can have their own vote, it's just vote.
Let's say yeah.
All right, nine A...
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you don't.
So again, the top resolution, I would recommend the centralization of a database for the state. So I would agree with that. In terms of, you know, reviewing staff members for faith law misconduct, those would be things that if we had found out or an allegation had been posed, we would be investigating through our due process with our collective bargaining agreement and our union partners. Okay? This would not be us reviewing people's cases for a DUI or for something else unrelated. So we have to stay focused on what faith law is for, which is misconduct for sexually inappropriate behavior towards an adult or a student. So it's not fully flushed out yet, just being, you know, fully transparent in terms of post-July 2023. But there's, you know, imagine there's a teacher hired at this school, and then the teacher that was there two summers prior has a different set of hiring rules. So it's not ideal, and that, I believe, is Ms. Johnson's point. So I agree with what your approach is in terms of the centralization, and then I think that this resolution is gonna continue to get flushed out over the time. I think that some partnership and some good dialogue at the state level and with locals is necessary before making a recommendation to go much further at this point.
I really do hope that they take the centralization up the ladder and continue to go because I think that will be for all school districts the safest for our students.
Okay, so...
Okay, straw poll for nine A. Are we voting to reconsider this?
Reconsider? Are we talking about nine A?
Nine A. It means that this likely will not, in order for this to be discussed at the assembly, the district has to, that submitted it needs to...
Yes.
The word I'm looking for.
Two, get two, two-thirds?
Yeah, and get two-thirds of the vote on the floor to have it reconsidered.
Okay.
So would you like it reconsidered?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four, five? Okay. And then, if reconsidered, should be adopted by the delegate assembly. Straw poll, yes?
If reconsidered, should be adopted.
Four?
Four, okay.
Is that what you have, Dr. Maria, four?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, last one, criminal background check?
I didn't vote.
So this is a summary. The committee agreed that this is a critical, that it is critical that school board members maintain the highest ethical standards. However, committee members determined that background checks for school board candidates create a different election standard for school board members as compared to other elected officials. Also, it could cause financial and procedural challenges for potential school board members. These challenges could deter qualified candidates from running for school board. Do we want that to be reconsidered?
I, my stance personally is that the difference between us and other elected officials is we are involved with students, we are in schools, and for me, I absolutely think a background check is necessary.
I absolutely agree.
The village doesn't necessarily have students. The Park District does, like, you know, that's their business, whatever. But as an elected official who is in contact with not just students, but students that may not have the ability to use their voice, I absolutely think that board members should have a background check.
Because what if, what if they didn't, and one of them was elected? And they were, they were, you know, and then they're in contact with all, with students and...
Just so we're, just so we're... Well, just so we're clear, if you're convicted of a felony, you can't hold this office. That's already a thing. So if I...
But if you're not, if you haven't been convicted of a felony?
And then you become convicted.
Listen, I'm in agreement with you. I'm just saying, like, I just, for full transparency, I just want to make sure, because I've talked to the person who devised this particular one, one-on-one. And just so we're abundantly clear, I want to make sure we're conveying proper information to the general public. You cannot be convicted of a felony and sit up here in this capacity, right?
Okay, so let's, let me ask you this. So does that mean that every board has to create their own policy around someone who is not convicted now, but what if they get convicted while they are in this office?
You can't serve.
So...
I mean, that's...
And again...
I'm just gonna keep, look, let's put a belt and suspenders around it. That's what I say. Belt and suspenders, like, you might not need them, but just in case.
I mean, I just think, like, one thing to consider here.
I just got that.
Okay? And doesn't, doesn't apply to me, doesn't apply to me, but one thing to consider here when we're talking about criminal background checks on everyone, like, all of us were young at one point. I'm not talking about felonies, okay, that's a different topic. But if you're convicted of something that's like a misdemeanor and you grow up, right? Like, that would, just making sure we're looking at this from all angles. I totally agree with Jen. I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't want people who harm kids or convicted of felony up here and walking around in our, in our schools without, you know, the proper authorization and all the channels that have to be and all that stuff. I'm with you, Jen, but I just...
Okay.
That's my consideration as well.
So how do they, how do they know? Maybe somebody up here knows. How does, how do they know?
No, the criminal background check. I mean, a record doesn't actually preclude you from being a teacher or from working in a school. The enumerated offenses whereby someone has hurt children, someone has sold drugs, someone is... Yeah, so the enumerated offenses. So having a criminal background in and of itself doesn't qualify someone from working for a school district.
But let's also recognize, and I'm gonna really tread this line very carefully, where you find yourself in a position that you don't have a policy in place, and the situation arises. Did the United States ever, you know, consider that potential presidential candidates could be elected and be felonious? So, you know, if, I'm going to, every day for myself, vote that I don't want... Unfortunately, they're gonna put infamous crimes as bribery and forgery in the same place as a sex offender. I can't change that, but what I can say is I just don't want any sex offenders around schools. So, and if you, if you, you, there are a lot of people that are certain ways that just haven't gotten caught. So I'm always gonna side on that. For me, unfortunately, it's black and white.
I get your point, and I totally agree, but if they haven't been caught, I'm not sure how this deals with that.
No, I agree. No, I, I'm, I'm just saying, my whole point is, is that if there's a situation where there's indicators or there's reasons that you might, I want that information out for the public when they're running or campaigning.
But that's in-
Yeah, go ahead, you go ahead.
I'm just thinking, if, if it's already in the statute, right? It's already in the statute.
We, we, we had-
They can't sit on this, they can't sit in this space.
Or our committees, we had that happen in this community, where we had someone who was convicted of a felony. It was a financial felony piece. They could no longer sit on the committee here. We had that situation occur.
Can we be on the, can we be on the ballot with the felony?
Who checked?
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I don't know if I-
I don't recall anyone that checked ever.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah. I don't know, I don't, I just don't know.
Listen, hey.
I'm all for-
And let's look at the district rationale. Joliet is saying there's a current law that states no school board member can be convicted of an infamous crime, and we've talked about this when I was on the policy committee. We don't have any way of knowing, like, you know, what I mean, Amy, myself, Jared, if you've worked for Latanya, we've all had background checks, 'cause we've worked at the school district. But there's no mechanism in place on, on the laws that say that you have to have a criminal background check. So this does that, this gives us that option.
I mean, I don't see what the harm is. I mean, if, if, if everyone is clean, then what's the problem with having a background check? No, I, I-
Um, I lean into Jared's point that I'm, one of my, I have the same consideration. Like, I'm between, like, I have, I have two, you know, shoulder opinions, um, is that I don't want this to negatively impact those candidates who might be ready, able, and willing to serve and run for a school board, um, spot. But they had something happen when they were twenty-two, uh, and they decide not to run because they don't want that out in the open, which I would understand, but I, but I also understand this point, so, um, I think we should vote our conscience.
All right, let's look from the students.
Okay, kind of speaking from a student perspective, how you guys are very, like, involved with our district and come to our schools and, like, very vol- volunteering. From a student perspective, if I were to be in contact with one, with someone different and new, and I were to form like a friendship with them, just to later find out that they were a convicted felon or something of like a high degree, I would feel that it would kind of make me mistrust you guys in a way, 'cause like, why didn't you guys have a background check? Because if you guys did, it'll kind of make me feel more safer. But if I were to form a, like, a friendship with them and would talk to them just to later find out, it would kind of make a student feel, again, like mistrusted and unsafe, because it would be your guy, I would think it's your guys' responsibility and, and would be obligated to do that. But I kind of see how, um, you guys were talking, how someone doesn't want their business out there. And I kind of understand how when you guys are younger, you guys have your moments of dilly, whatever, dilly-daddling, which I do understand, but I feel like background checks aren't necessary when it comes to bigger, hi- right? Higher, higher roles, because you just never know what someone is, was doing or is doing. And it's just like a big priority that should be, you know, seen.
I think it's very tricky.
I think it's a tricky, yeah.
Can we vote? I mean, and, well, let's, let's be real, let's be realistic. These are the ones that are probably not gonna make the floor anyway. So.
Yeah, sixty-six percent is now the threshold.
So, um, ten A, should this be reconsidered? Do we have yes votes?
Reconsider, yes.
Reconsider.
Five?
Five? And, oh, I think that was, I think that was six.
I was marking it.
Was it six?
Six?
Okay.
And now it's one.
Um, if reconsidered, should be adopted by the delegate assembly. One, two, two. That's two?
Three.
Three.
It's four.
Okay, geez, you guys are late voting.
I'm not hiding anything, so I don't-
It's, four.
Yeah, I'm-
Some of the things can be misdemeanors and infamous crimes, so it's, it's one of those where the wording is not what I like, but I'll say yes. Yes, whatever.
Okay, let's vote, let's, let's, like, officially vote now.
I did.
Yes, please.
All right, board of-
I can.
One, two, three, four.
Yes, I was a yes. Six, Jared.
I can't see you guys when you're under the punch like that.
Oh, I was, I was up here.
Six? Oh, boy, how long did that take? How long did that take?
I don't know. All right, I will happily take these ideas as a representative of the board, and I'll report back.
Thank you, delegate.
Dr. Maria.
It is kind of interesting.
Are we reporting, obviously, I mean, we're gonna go ask you, but, like, one-on-one, one-on-one. But are, is this maybe something we report back at the, um, Policy Legislative Committee then it comes here?
Yeah, and we can do it during Board Comments or at, yeah, at Committee Reporters.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Maria. Uh, next, uh, we have, uh, Dr. Kincaid, Board Policy First Readings.
Yep, we have several, uh, board policies coming for your first read and review. Most of the changes that are being recommend, recommended is around, um, federal changes to Title IX. Um, if you review policy two-two-sixty, two-two-sixty-five, five-one-hundred, seven-twenty, and seven-one-eighty-five, all of them are related to changes in Title IX. Um, there are no additional changes above and beyond, um, what is being recommended by press plus related to, again, uh, Title IX changes. Also, in five-one-hundred, there is some recommendations, um, to be in alignment with school code of the removal of some staff development, some addition of staff development, um, which the additions are focused on trauma-responsive environments, um, and then also changes in Title IX. And then the remaining policy, two-two, excuse me, two-one-two-five, is related to expenditure reimbursement. When we went through the press, uh, policy alignment, we wanted there to be consistency across our district and related to, um, per diem reimbursement. Um, this is periodically reviewed in order to be in alignment with state guidelines. We had set the threshold so that no matter the funding source, particularly our grant funding source, there would be consistency in our reimbursement. So the level of which we are able to reimburse has risen. The recommended value is, uh, fifty-four dollars, again, to be in alignment across the district, which would then be thirteen dollars for breakfast, fifteen dollars for lunch, and twenty-six dollars for dinner. Are there any questions?
Not gonna get you much these days, but we'll-
It's higher than the current, the current rate of six-fifty, six-fifty, and nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Um, Mr. Obafemi, radio and repeater RFP?
I'm gonna call, uh, Mr. Brent Keiger and Kevin McDonough to, uh, to speak to the board about the RFP process.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I'm just gonna hit the highlights of this, uh, proposal. Um, uh, we are asking or reviewing the RFP for a, uh, radio and repeater refresh. Uh, we're talking about over thirteen hundred, uh, two-way radios in the schools and repeaters for all the buildings. Um, these devices are vital to the day-in, day-out use, uh, of the buildings, uh, whether it be at athletics or emergencies or, uh, whatever, constantly being used. Uh, the last refresh that we've had, never. Uh, as far as I'm aware, uh, everything's been, uh, Band-Aid on. Um, uh, we have, uh, when something breaks or we need something new, it's add another device to the system. Um, it isn't uncommon for radios, uh, at multiple schools to be over ten years old and a variety of different models. Um, why now? We've had an uptick of radio issues, uh, with breaking. Um, we've also had environmental issues causing interference with the current platform. Uh, the refresh will move us to a digital platform rather than an antiquated, uh, analog system, um, which will also give us, uh, additional capabilities. Uh, the RFP process, uh, we released it originally on August twenty-third. Uh, the deadline was pushed back for a month due to incomplete and lack of bids. Uh, so it was pushed back to October fifth. Uh, since that time, October fifth, uh, we had two submissions, uh, that were, uh, given to us and one, uh, that was disqualified because it was after the deadline. Um, our recommendation, we are recommending that Abeep be the choice vendor, uh, for this refresh, uh, not only because of the cost, uh, of the project, but also they have been our, uh, vendor, uh, for the last two to three years, and we've had a very positive experience with them during that time. Um-
And as far as funding is concerned, we know this is a significant cost, five-seventeen. We are not, uh, thinking about paying for that out of our regular operational budget. What we are looking at is doing a lease, uh, a lease, and, uh, three to five years. Uh, we are talking to a couple of, uh, leasing entity, and after the three to five years will be a dollar to retain the, uh, the equipment.
You said a dollar to retain it, so it's a lease for three to five years, and then at the end of it, it's a dollar to retain the equip, to retain it?
Yes.
Okay.
And where, where is this coming from operations?
Uh, the, the lease, this will be IT.
Can you, um, tell me what a repeater is? I should probably know this.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so repeater is a device, uh, think of it as a booster. It will amplify a particular channel on the radio system, so it goes further in the building.
Oh, okay, okay. What is-
Do you have, is there any relation to this Abeep LLC company? Because they've come up before, and I just wondered. I, I feel like every time they come up, they're, this, the RFP process automatically pushes them forward. And I just wonder, what is the relation to Abeep LLC?
Uh, previously, to choosing them as a replacement vendor two years ago, uh, we had no relationship with them.
Okay.
Now, as, uh, Brent mentioned earlier, we had another person who submitted, but the person submitted late, and by law, even if a second late, we could not consider, we didn't open it, we didn't consider, because they were late. It would be violation of the provisions of the RFP.
By law, soon?
Yeah, we can, if we set a deadline, a, a date and a time when the bids have to be submitted, if it's a minute later than that, by law, we cannot open it.
Yes. Um, and why are we, and I did hear, I don't, I'm not being coy when I say this, but instead of, this is just a huge amount of money, is why are we not making this a part of our maintenance facility, master maintenance facilities plan? Why are we pushing this forward now?
Uh, I think Brent mentioned it before. With a spade of all the complications that we've been having in our building, safety, security, our radios is the shortest way for us to communicate, uh, district-wide. And the longer we wait with a, a radio system that is not consistent, reliable, uh, the more, the more problematic it gets for us with daily operations.
Can you describe what the alternate transportation proposal is?
So, what we had, uh, thought about is, uh, replacing the radios on the, on the, on the buses. So when we asked for the regular bid, if you're asking for an additional bid, uh, in addition to the regular bid, you call that an automatic bid. So what we're saying is, give us pricing on, uh, the, on the radios and the repeaters in our building. And we wanted to know, what will it cost to provide radio just for our buses?
So that would be the additional two-thirty-nine or one-oh-three, depending on, okay, thank you.
So we're only looking for the buildings, though?
For right now, yes.
Okay.
We may do the, uh, the transportation later, just financially. This is, we think this is prudent to do the buildings now and consider doing the, uh, transportation later on.
A, a key function in, of our safety approach is the fast and efficient communication. And my understanding is that these will, uh, whatever we purchase eventually, or these are the exact ones, um, in this solution, have interoperability with police, correct? So they're able to work with police. If not, we need to really understand that, 'cause, uh, being able to, or at least give police access to them so that they can engage in our communication.
Uh, so far, the, uh, plan has been that should we need to communicate with police or whoever shows on-site, uh, we would end up giving them a particular radio to communicate. Uh, it's also our understanding that, uh, there's already some, uh, police configurations. They have our frequencies and have pre-programmed them into their radio.
And, and this is something that's gone on for a while, so I, I, I would say that under OMA, we are allowed to discuss some of this in closed session around safety considerations. And so there are some aspects of this that I'd be happy to bring to the board at our next session, in closed session, why this isn't crucial in board. So I think that there are important considerations that I'd wanna discuss in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Obafemi, the next two are yours. Do you wanna walk us through the next two?
Right, so this is, uh, the intergovernmental agreement, uh, oh, land cash, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. The, the, uh, county of Kendall collects money from developers on behalf of, uh, of the district. And after it's accumulated to a certain point, the board has to, uh, approve a resolution in public in order for the funds to be transferred to us. And the funds can only be used for-
Hold on a second, Mr.-
I asked them to stick around through the intergovernmental agreement-
Okay.
So they could weigh in on that, and then told them they could leave.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, so that's what we're bringing before the board, the resolution to allow Kendall County to transfer the fifty, uh, fifty-six ninety-nine that has been accumulated to us.
Okay, questions for Mr. Obafemi?
We're saved.
We saved, we saved, yes. It's nice to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Obafemi. Next up, we have, uh, nine-eleven, intergovernmental-
This is the intergovernmental agreement that I mentioned earlier that, uh, would lead to us cooperating with the, uh, the village as well as the, uh, the Kendall County to build a sidewalk from, uh, on our road and bring it to OE. What it will allow our students to do is to be able to walk instead of being transported, and to do it safely.
Now, the one question I would have is, if we were to put that there, would that then satisfy the safety audit that we're about to do? I'd like to know that, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, it probably, it probably will-
Because it is supported by our zone there.
The, we talked during our meetings about the configuration, right? Making sure we move it, uh, far away from the road, so it's not sitting next to the road. So we also talked about what's, like, the engineers with the village talked about, uh, positioning and designing the sidewalk in such a way that it's safe.
So the engineers would-
Where is that?
They would, they would know that answer as well.
Yes.
Then, then I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, we brought it up to them.
Okay, then I'm good.
That's a concern of mine.
I, I wouldn't want it to put the investment and then be told that's not-
Is it possible to get some advice or counsel from the, whoever's conducting our, our safety? Or what do we call it?
The, uh-
Yeah, the, the-
He said that the engineers-
The engineer from the village, actually.
They're an authority on that.
Yeah, we are, we are really, really deep discussion with them.
Okay.
And just reminding them, we're in the business of children, children's safety. So the placement of the sidewalk is such, is gotta be in such a way that it protects the health and safety of our kids. So when they were gonna pres- uh, uh, actually locate it before, they moved that to accommodate what we brought up with them.
Would there be like, uh, um, kind of-
Are they adding a curb?
Are they, why? Are they wanting? No, no, but they're far away from the road.
Like a parkway or?
Yeah, so if you look at, uh, the road, there's, um, there's a, a real, actually, it, it also involves getting easement from a farm. If you, there's a firm that's been there for a while. And the owner of the firm has actually been trying to sell it to us, except we, we don't need the land. So part of what we're doing is getting an easement from that farmer to be able to, to locate that sidewalk through, through the firm. The, uh, the attorney is to, we're actually had a conversation with the, uh, the attorney representing the owner of the firm. But the placement of the sidewalk is such where we feel comfortable that it'll be safe with the traffic over there.
Is it the east side of the street or the west side of the street?
I think it's the side, uh, on the side of the high school.
Okay, and to that point though, when people have come to us.
Agden Falls, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, I want to be collaborative with our intergovernmental agencies. What, why is this, in this subdivision, our responsibility? I, yes, our students, I'm not questioning that, I'm not questioning that, but this is off of our campus.
Right, but what it does is, though, the kids right now, we have to transport them because there's no way from, the sidewalk ends in the subdivision. So there's no way for them to be able to make it to school without us providing transportation. Because Harvey Road is a major road, right? And there's no sidewalk, they couldn't walk to school. By having this sidewalk constructed, it serves all the, the, uh, the municipality, the tax body. Because the, uh, the county has an interest in health and safety of the residents. The village, since the subdivision is located in Oswego, has a, an interest. And we, as folks who educate small children, we have a responsibility.
I guess I'm really questioning the 33%. I'm got, I guess I'm trying to understand the equality of what we're paying. And is it a third of 360,000?
No, they, just to be, to be honest, we don't know what the price will be until the, uh, the RFP comes back. But the estimate that we talked about, ballpark is about a hundred thousand dollars.
So we say yes, and then the ballpark comes back at 500,000. Where, I guess, where are we? And it says, we are also soliciting costs to expand the multi-use path. Who's we, us or they are?
The entity, but we're cooperating together, all three of us, yes, yes.
It, it, well, there's a cost advantage because we are, we are currently, so to your point. So I think one of the things that's been brought up in this meeting earlier is how do we think about these development properties, economic development? Now, because we've entered a new phase in these relationships with our entities, I have a strong inclination to believe that that is not a bigger priority. Um, and it's also something that is important to the village.
But is it, is it going to be 360 or is it going to be 500,000? And that depends on the day that you ask because the cost of materials goes up and so forth. So do we have an opportunity, 33 of, of 360 is a hundred, roughly 119,000, sounds great. But if it gets to 300 or 400,000, then?
What I can assure you is that if you get, no one wants to save money other than I do. I wake up and go to sleep every day in the county and depending on.
I was just gonna say, can I, can I, can I ask for this? What's, I think this would be good for us to see the offset. So can you give us some figures on, I understand that you're saying, and I don't disagree with you, okay, 119,000 dollars, we need to be cognizant of the money that we're spending. So we're spending it in the hopes that there's a savings due to the transportation, so can you show that to us? And then I think that would help. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, we can.
And do we have?
But it, it will be, that one of the key pain will be looking at resiliency. If it gets expensive, pricey, we're not, we, we can't afford it, but yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I, I think that you were concerned with capping the financial impact. So by signing this, are we saying that there is, are we, are we signing away that cap?
It's not, it's not binding.
Okay.
It's, it's an agreement that we reach and.
And every time we do something like this, we are, we are not doing something else. And you know, we all know, we have a list seven miles long. So that's why I'm trying to be cognizant about, yes, this is important. I'm never questioning anything that has to do with the safety of children, please don't think that. Just want to make sure that we all, when we go into an intergovernmental agreement, we get what we think we're getting.
Well, that's why I was, I want to make sure that it's, does what it means to do.
Yes.
And yes, seeing the cash flows, you know, if it's got a year or two payback period, then that's, then, I mean, it kind of, it's a no-brainer. But, um, everything that we're investing in is for the public good. So you, you are correct, yeah.
Is there a reason?
Prioritize us. One or two-year payback period is, would be very.
And when we get the RFP, we'll bring it to the board.
That's what I was gonna ask.
We'll bring it to the board.
Is there a reason that we have to sign the intergovernmental agreement before we have the RFP?
I think the intergovernmental agreement is more of intention to cooperate and, and get this done. Now, if we, if we get the RFP and if it's too rich and we can't afford it, we can always say this is beyond what we had anticipated. And it doesn't, no money's been committed because all, all that will have happened is, there was a conversation that was held with the, uh, the attorney for the, for the owner of the firm. Where we're requesting easement and there's gonna be an RFP done. And once we get the RFP, we'll bring it to the board. We would never obligate the board to expensive.
I agree with that.
Without approval.
Help me understand why we wouldn't complete our comprehensive facilities plan before we did this. I mean, because if you think about it, there's safety issues all over this community with, that don't have sidewalks. So why this one right now?
What I would say is, is that we are, we have an opportunity to, to cooperate with our, with our, with our partners, municipal partners. And not too often, kind of, school districts say, you have the county and you have the village where you're located. They're willing to pay 66% of the cost of doing something. You know, it's not something that I put after. And I think all that speaks to is the ability to even develop a closer relationship and, and do more partnership. So instead of us paying 100% of things, if we can find a way to only pay 33% of most of, it just makes the leverage better. So that's, that's, that's one thing.
You know, it's like, this is something that, that didn't get done in the way that it should have been done. But now we're, we have an opportunity to get it done without having to incur the total burden of it.
We're also plan, and I think to the question, two question, two points. In terms of the master planning process, we will also invite them to participate in our work as we go through that process, which will also inform, and we don't know what that will yield, right? So that's number one. Number two, we are planting seeds for future projects that may also have significant support for us. Uh, Mr. Plogar often talks about the infrastructure in the area, whether it's writing grants for big projects. I mean, those require a deep level of shared commitment. This is a, to be honest with you, in a construction project world, this is a small, small project, right? And so I do think that Mr. Obafemi's been very clear and I appreciate that about, this will come back to the board for full review regarding what the final cost numbers are. And the board will then at that point has freedom to say, you know, thank you very much, but this doesn't fit with our potential cost. What I'm hearing is that if it overburdens the district and takes away from our opportunity to do other projects, it will do that. There are, there are, this one is one of safety and there are other areas, but I don't think there is one as pronounced as this one.
But can I, can I just bring up, uh, because we had talked about signing this agreement. I mean, it says this agreement shall be in full force and effect beginning after all signatories have signed and accepted this agreement and shall endure through the completion of the project. That seems to me that once we sign it, we're, we're in it.
No, if the board doesn't feel comfortable signing this, the agreement now, we can talk to our partners.
Yes, that's true.
And wait till, until after the RFP is received and then bring it back for signature.
Yes.
I'd vote for that, yeah.
I think that, and again, I'd like to see the transportation savings piece to Dominic's point, like, what is that like?
We'll be happy.
Year, two years, whatever. So I, like, I'm gonna differ where, I don't know if there's a cap, because I don't know what the savings are. If you tell me we're gonna save a million dollars, then, then the cap to me is a, I know we're not going to, I'm just throwing, I know we're not. But my, my point is if you told me we're gonna save a million dollars, then my cap isn't 500,000 necessarily, you know what I mean? So I need to see that piece too, I think, as well.
Is there a way to do an intergo- intergovernmental agreement so that we show good faith with our partners that says pending finances or something like that? Because I don't wanna, I want to keep the momentum going with our partners in a way that says, yes, this is, these are the types of things we want to do together. But we're also, you know.
Cognizant of, uh, cost.
Yeah, cognizant of finances and the money.
No, I, I like that, signing it with the pending RFP, you know, uh, outcome or whatever.
We'll go back to our partners and express the, uh, the will of the board, that there's a level of, uh, of feeling that we're putting out the, the cart before the horse. And see what the RFP number says before we, we all put a provision in there that allows. So we will do that, we will certainly do that.
It's not unreasonable.
Yeah, I think they would understand that too.
This is not the first time we've been approached with something and then the costs have come in significantly different. So I think that's where everyone's hesitation is at, certainly is mine.
Understandable, we will do that, we'll take that, uh, the message back, thank you.
All right, moving on, 10.1 action item, approval of paper supply RFP.
Okay, you want me to make a motion?
Oh, yes.
Okay, uh, make a mo-.
Sorry.
I make a motion to approve Veritiv Paper Company to provide paper supplies to our district.
Second.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venmet?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, action item 10.2, approval of Game Time Playground Grant. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the playground replacement repair of Boulder Hill Homestead and Lakewood Creek with the grant support from Game Time.
Aye.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Joyfully aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Ecstatically aye.
Ms. Venmet?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0, action item 10.3, approval of board member travel expenses. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the board member travel expenses to attend the triple I conference in Chicago.
Before we do roll call, I just wanted to say something.
We, we need to make the, we need a sec, and then we do discussion. Oh, did he? Okay, sir, I didn't hear it, sorry.
Um, not a question, more of a statement, but I received some feedback from the community, um, and questioning why we needed to spend the night at the triple I conference. So I wanted to share the benefit of the answer for the community. When we go down there, people, people said, well, I work in the city and am able to come home every night and go back. When we go down there, during the day, we are in sessions all day, learning sessions. And at night, we are all, um, either coming together to have dinner and working sessions or we are, or, or share what we've learned without violating OMA. Or we are going to meet with vendors and/or other people who are providing learning opportunities for us. I also heard that they didn't feel that we, um, gained anything from triple I. So I just want to be very clear that while it may not be something you agree with, and that's fine, you can agree, disagree with it. There are opportunities for us to learn where it may not have an immediate impact, but it will have a long term, could possibly have a long-term or future impact. So I just wanted to share with that. I appreciate all the feedback we received from the community, um, but I just wanted to address that publicly, um, for the comments that were made.
And we have brought back many of the, um, learning tools, um, that we, um, we're exposed to while at, um, triple I. That have benefited our, our effectiveness and efficiency as a board, um, as well as, um, supporting and, um, helping, um, our superintendent. To, to be accountable to our board, for us to be accountable to ourselves.
And our community.
There's so many things that we, we have implemented. And so I would just say it's, it's money well spent. Also, I would say that we, when, when, um, when we are at triple I, we are gaining, um, best practices around how we run our organization. And that is invaluable, that's not information that we can get being in a cocoon and not, um, networking with all those five or 600 representatives from all the other districts. So that would be my thoughts.
And I'm gonna piggyback on that real quick, just because of, of what Jen had mentioned, just because the expenses are listed, doesn't necessarily mean that board members submit those and collect. There has been talk about, um, all of us getting huge amounts for travel expenses, et cetera. Um, maybe I missed out last year, but, but, you know, it's, the travel and all those things are, are kind of, are on us. So, um, just because it's allowable doesn't mean that it's applied for.
I've never submitted a reimbursement.
The, the other piece too, that I just want to touch on as far as the, the wealth of this, when I came to the board in 2015, I remember going down and like, nobody was even gonna be the delegate, delegate here to have a voice. And, and the MO was, well, they don't really come, Oswego doesn't really show up for that. And I, I, I think as we look, I'm gonna try not to get on my soapbox too much, but as we look at the area that we're in that has all of this, these, um, you know, large unit districts connected to each other. I think it's important for the general public to realize how much they've divided us. Um, you know, some of us are in Kishawaki, some of us are in Three Rivers, some of us are in DuPage. And, and yet, we are all this kind of area dealing with all of these pieces together. And so I think it is also vital when it comes to talking to these other boards, um, that are in our area that do share kind of similar characteristics to us and, and commonalities and so forth and so on.
We are in the business of education, if I may, board. And if the, if the board of, if the board of education is not committed to invest in itself and its learning along the process, then I have a lot of questions. Because we, we invite educators and this really represents point 00005% of our total budget. So I would just invite, um, anybody who has questions, I'd be happy to speak to that. Um, I would say that having observed this board and its deep commitment to really learning, bringing that learning back to this board and this community is crucial. And there is nothing more important, I remember last year, sitting with board members from across the state. And so both you're learning practical, but you're also learning current trends in the field of education. Our board member was invited to serve on a, on a committee. Uh, we have multiple board members who participate in panel discussions and so really being leaders of the good work in the community. And so, you know, the learning does not stop, um, just because you become a board member. In fact, you model to the community in this small investment that you are committed and you expect the staff to do the same for themselves. So thank you.
And there is some personal development as well, where you learn how to be a good board member to your cohorts. And, um, I attended last year Breaking Down the Walls, just something very important that I needed personally to help be a better board member. So I just needed to address it. Obviously, um, I was, you know, disappointed to receive it, but everybody has their opinion. You may not physically see it, but I, I know that the benefits outweigh the costs greatly.
No, I was just gonna say, thank you. On November 4th, if you'd like to join us for, um.
Dr. Kilgody just said it way more eloquently than I was, than I was about to say it, so I thank you for shutting my mouth.
Yeah.
Never, never, Mr. Gatewood. Let's vote, let's vote.
In the business of educating, in the business of education, and we have to educate ourselves.
I'm ready, I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venmet?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, action item ten point four, approval of school year twenty-six new high school courses and title changes. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the new high school courses, title changes, and curriculum updates for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, action.
Okay, I just wanna say one thing. I wanna thank the team and the leadership team for their work on this. And also to the committee, um, the Teaching and Learning Committee for their work. The other thing I wanted to, and, and as part of that commitment to continuous improvement, I know that they will be bringing to the Teaching and Learning, Equity Teaching and Learning Committee, um, a process to reflect on the learning for how we reflect on courses. And we wanna thank everybody for their feedback along the way. And our union partners, our educators who've been a part of this process, and we wanna thank them.
And ten point five, approval of no trespass order. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the no trespass order as presented.
Second.
Ms. Venmus?
Aye.
Dr. Maria?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?